Good evening.
We don't need to show the name of the committee?
No, he's going to be excused.
And then, um, you just need to show Quinn?
Oh, she signed it.
I did.
Okay, thank you.
Alrighty. Good evening, we're gonna begin and we're gonna call the Planning Commission meeting to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. We're live on KCLV Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, Tuesday at 5:00 a.m., and Thursday at 6:00 p.m. Would everybody please stand for the place allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Chair Truesdale.
Present.
Commissioner Goins.
Present.
Commissioner Flengus is absent. Commissioner Quinn?
Here.
Commissioner Trowbridge?
Present.
Commissioner Evans?
Present.
Commissioner Moody?
Present.
Thank you.
And for all of you that don't know, I want to welcome our newest Planning Commissioner, Todd Moody, has been a long resident of the Valley and a distinguished attorney here, and I think he will do an excellent job, and we wish him well.
Thank you.
I call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions, the appeal and review process if appropriate. Please read this carefully if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate your adhering to these rules so we can have a smooth meeting. Can we have a motion on the minutes of the August 26th meeting?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the minutes of the August 26th meeting.
Any comments, clarifications? Commissioner Moody?
I'll abstain since I was not here.
Okay, alright. There's a motion for approval. If there are no other questions, please cast your vote. And those are approved. We have no consent items, so now we're going into our housekeeping items.
Excuse me, gentlemen, do you have the approval of the minutes? Did we just do that?
Yeah, that's...
Oh, I'm so sorry, sorry.
You're scaring me.
Testing.
Our housekeeping items, staff.
Mr. Chairman, Items 26 and 27, the applicant has requested these items be obeyed to the October 21st Planning Commission meeting.
And that's all we have? That's it?
Motion on that.
Vice Chairman Goins?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve all the abants and withdraw all items as read in by staff.
Mr. Chairman, I think we'll need to first go through that abance, or that, the abance first approve that one, and then go to those items.
Just the abance. That's what we do.
Oh, I thought he was approving all the items.
No.
Is there any questions? Is there anybody here on these two items, 26 and 27? Seeing no one, oh, you're here? Please come forward.
Just to obey.
Oh, you're here for, okay, that's fine. So, a motion is to bring this in order, please cast your vote. And those are, items are approved, and like I say, we have no consent items, now we've got our one motion, one vote. The following are items that may be considered in one motion, one vote. They are considered routine, non-public and public hearing items. All public hearings and non-public hearings will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standards, conditions for the application, recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this part of the, portion of the agenda. Item 6, ZON 38968, applicant city Las Vegas, owner NV Energy, from R4 High Density Residential to CV. Item 7, ZON 38971, applicant city Las Vegas, owner NV Energy, from Professional Office and Parking to CV. Item 8, ZON 38978, applicant city Las Vegas, owner NV Energy, from, zone change from M Industrial to CV. Item 9, VAR 39237, applicant owner city Las Vegas, to allow a proposed sign height of 42 feet where 37 feet is the maximum allowed at the northwest corner of Las Vegas Boulevard and McWilliams. Items 10 and 11 are related. Item 10, WVR 39089, applicant owner KB of Nevada, or Homes of Nevada, Inc., to allow an internal intersection offset of 115 feet where 125 feet is required, and to allow a private streets, to allow private streets to terminate in dead-end stubs where cul-de-sacs are required. Tentative map, TMP 39088, for a 52-lot, single-family residential subdivision. Item 12, RQR 39097, applicant Clear Channel Outdoor, owner Lodge BPOE 1468, for a 14-foot by 48-foot off-premise sign at 4100 West Charleston Boulevard. Item 13, RQR 39106, applicant Lamar Central Outdoor LLC, owner Urban Land Nevada, for a 40-foot tall, 14-by-48-foot off-premise sign at 2550 Highland Drive. Item 14, RQR 39107, applicant Lamar Central Outdoor LLC, owner Shar West Inc., for a 40-foot tall, 14-by-48-foot off-premise sign at 4820 West Charleston Boulevard. Item 15, RQR 39215, applicant Lamar Central Outdoor, owner 7-Eleven Inc., for a 40-foot tall, 14-by-48-foot off-premise sign at 6070 West Sahara. Item 16, SUP 39104, applicant Phoenix Physical Therapy and Longevity Center, owner Shinhan E. N. C. America Inc., to add a massage establishment used within the existing 3,504-square-foot medical office with a waiver to allow a 100-foot distance separation from residential property where 400 feet is required at 950 South Durango Drive. Item 17, SUP 39144, applicant Westside Firefly LLC, owner Centennial Property LLC, for a proposed 7,000-square-foot supper club in a former restaurant with a waiver to allow a zero-foot separation distance where 400 feet is required at 9560 West Ara. Item 18, VAC 39018, applicant Party Homes of Nevada Inc., owner HOF Financial LLC, or Financial One LLC, petition to vacate U.S. government patent easements generally located approximately 300 feet northwest of the intersection of Schaumburg Road and Centennial Parkway. Item 19, VAC 39118, applicant owner Acquest Vegas LLC, petition to vacate 20-foot-wide public drainage easement at the southeast corner of Rancho Drive and Alexander Road. Item 20, VAC 39142, applicant owner William Lyon Homes, petition to vacate the sewer and drainage easements generally located at the southwest corner of Iron Mountain Road and Jones Boulevard. Item 21, VAC 39145, applicant owner city Las Vegas, petition to vacate the aerial right-of-way for a portion of an existing 20-foot-wide public alley located between Clark Avenue and Bonneville Avenue and between First Street and Casino Center Boulevard. And that's all those items.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Staff would like to pull Items 10 and 11 as we have a added condition.
Okay. These were advertised as public hearing. Anybody here wishing to speak on these items, please come forward.
I wanted to speak on 10 and 11.
Okay. Anybody else? Commissioner Trowbridge?
In regards to item number 16, which is a request for a massage establishment, I would normally pull this and prompt some discussion, but because this application is to add a massage feature to a existing medical facility where they treat people with soft tissue, I'm not going to do that, I'm gonna go ahead and support the item, but I just wanted to comment that it's, it's not a massage parlor where you, it's open until all hours of the day and night, and it's part of a medical facility, so it's...
Okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, for the record, number 6, 7, 8, 12, and 16 are all items, I'm sorry, not 16, 14 and 15 are all signs in Ward 1, and I did visit each and every one of them to ensure my ward that they are in good standing and they're clean, so I just think it's important to look at them, so for that, I just wanted you to know they're in good shape.
Okay. While we're gonna go ahead and close the public hearing, and motion.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve one motion, one vote items 6 through 9, 12 through 21, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Okay, there's a motion for approval. If there are no other comments, please cast your vote. And those are approved.
Items 6 through 8, 12 through 15, and 21 will go forward to City Council on October 20th. Items 9 and 16 through 20 are final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you. Now we'll go to Items 10 and 11, I'll just read the headers on both these. Item 10, WVR 39089, and number 11, TMP 39088. Staff.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant has proposed a 52-lot, single-family, non-gated residential subdivision with private streets, which has been approved by the Cliffs Edge or Providence Design Review Committee. The map meets all applicable Cliffs Edge design guidelines and all Title 18 requirements for tentative maps, with the exception of two waivers of design standards, which staff can support as their minor in nature. Staff therefore recommends approval of the waiver request and the accompanying tentative map with conditions. If denied, a new subdivision design that complies with Title 18 standards would have to be submitted for review. If approved, the following condition should be added to the tentative map, which is item number 11. The lot depicted south of Lot 339 on the east side of Leyland Street shall be developed as a private park and fully constructed prior to the issuance of a building permit for the 27th residents in the subdivision. The park shall be maintained by the Homeowners Association. Please note that there are additional letters of protest and support for this item since publication.
Thank you. This was advertised as public hearing, and we wish to speak on this item, please come forward.
Thank you, Todd Parlow, 240 North 19th Street. And there's something wrong with the monitors. One of the monitors shows the map and the others don't. But, my thing is, a couple of years ago, we had a small thing that wanted to dead-end on a, on a stub of the street, and there was a tremendous ruckus about that. Why is it that we changed this now to approval?
Okay.
Because at that time, they said that they never wanted to see a, a street coming to a dead-end stub, so...
Thank you. Commissioner...
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to abstain on this item, 'cause I own a KB home and I'm right in the middle of a, of an issue with them right now, and just to be honest with you, I'll probably give my honest opinion, so I better just abstain and be quiet about this.
Thank you. Public Works, can you answer the question with regard to the termination of the streets and why it's acceptable at this point? Or not?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if I may, through you. In the past, we've had issues with the cleaning vehicles being able, the street sweepers being able to get around these type of stub streets. But because this is a private subdivision, and the city will not be maintaining these streets, additionally with the fact that I would say 75% of this subdivision was previously adopted when, when the code did not require streets set in with a cul-de-sac, we felt it was permissible to allow them to continue what they had already been approved for, for 70% of the subdivision.
Thank you. Is the applicant present on the side?
Good evening, my name is Jeffrey Armstrong, 2727 South Rainbow, here representing the applicant. We do not have any issues with the conditions.
Thank you.
Mr. Trowbridge?
Mr. Chair, there was a gentleman down here that raised his hand earlier, did you wish to speak?
I just had, wanted to make a quick statement.
Please go forward, I mean...
Name's up, children, 7921, Lindor's Lock. I actually live two houses down from that specific area, they want to tear all the grass out, which was originally supposed to be owned by the community, and to this day, KB Home has still not given a single resident reason as to why they did not turn it over, though they've been paying for the landscape of that little bit of grass, the answers have never been given to anybody. And on top of that, our community has a large amount of children, and specifically on that street, just on that corner alone, I think we have over 17 children ages 13 months, all the way up to like 15 years old, who typically, that is their place to go hang out, that's the place to play, and I know as a fact, at least 90% of the community are 100% against it, and when we all bought our homes in there, KB Home told us, their representatives, their real estate agents said, "Nothing will be built behind that brick wall," which is my backyard, "except for possibly the 215, which is gonna be built by the Focus Group, who is now apparently going out of business or bankrupt, et cetera." So, that was just another question I had to bring up before you guys to think about, is all the things KB Home told every resident in that community, between Cambridge Villas and Cambridge Crossings, which is, they want to take grass area out of both places. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll allow one more, but...
I'm Janet Love, I'm from KB Home. We had multiple meetings with the homeowners association and with the residents, Commissioner Ross's office was involved. We had many private meetings with a few select homeowners that called the, I mean, Councilman Ross, called the Councilman's office, we had many meetings with them, we had many meetings with HOA. We actually made a monetary settlement with the HOA to pay for this maintenance that they've been doing on these grass areas that he spoke of. Our park that we're proposing to do, we made an agreement with the HOA as well, that we're putting in a play structure for the children, all the children that he mentioned are in the community. So I just wanted to express all the work that's gone in on our behalf, as KB Home, we've tried to, we've modified this site plan, I can't even count the number of times, trying to address some of the concerns that the residents have had at the community. We feel that this is the, the site plan that was the most agreeable to most of the residents, we addressed some of their, their safety concerns, and their concerns for their children, and activities for their children, so I ask, I ask your support of this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Trowbridge?
Yes, if, ma'am?
Yes?
Would you please come back up here?
Sure.
Now, when we look at the, the rendering that's, that's provided here, can you show me exactly where the green space is currently that you're removing?
On the green space.
And then answer the question as to where are the children gonna go play, other than on this single apparatus that, it's gotta be a pretty nice one to accommodate the needs of a 15-month-old and a 15-year-old, that's a pretty diverse population trying to service.
We've, we made an agreement with the HOA, we asked them, we even sent out a survey to the residents. The residents responded of what they, what they would like to see in their community. What we ultimately agreed upon was we picked a play structure that'll be age-appropriate from the ages of 2 to 12, so we're trying to, I mean, when you, when you look at a play structure, it's not, you know, to get for a 15-month-old, 'cause I have a 15-month-old, there's not many play structures that will go from 15 months all the way up to, you know, like a 12-year-old. We actually, on the map, it's, it's the, like, the condition that was added to our application, it's the area south of Lot, I think it's 339. There'll be grass in there as well, a grass area and a play structure, and benches, landscaping. We actually sent the landscape plan and site plan to the HOA at least three times.
Do you have a letter of support from the HOA?
We, we have a development agreement with them, that the HOA signed and that we signed. I do not have a copy of it with me.
How much acreage is there under grass currently? And what will there be if we approve this item?
With, with this park area and the two areas that we would, we, we own this, the one portion that's occupied underneath Lot 300 and 361, I think it is, we actually never turned over that area because we weren't sure of the beltway alignment. There's an area south of that that we turned over to the HOA, actually by mistake, it, we, we didn't intend to turn that over, it's somebody internal that turned it over. So we, we, we weren't quite sure what the beltway alignment would be. We were under the impression, and we would've been perfectly happy if, you know, they would've, Focus would've purchased the land from us and the beltway would've gone in. That didn't happen, so now we have this piece of land out there that we're, you know, trying to develop and complete this community. But the grass area currently is, I don't know the exact numbers, but it, it's comparable to what the, what the area is of that park. Because when we were talking with the HOA, we actually had to move lot lines and give up, well, not give up, but give them more of a park area to equate to the amount of area that they have now, which are actually in two separate locations. Now it'll be in one centralized location.
And the, the total acreage that's available as green space is not gonna be diminished?
No, it, it, it's comparable to what's there now, it's within, I, I mean, it's, it's very similar.
Seven acres down to two, or what do you mean?
Oh, no, 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 it's, it's like, you know, I don't remember how many acres this park is. It's, it's within like tenths of an acre.
Okay.
It's, it's within tenths of an acre, I mean, tenths of what's there now. It's very similar.
Okay.
And like I said, we, we also had an open house up at the Centennial Hills Community Center, where we had our floor plans, the park plan, the site plan, we were there, myself and another KB representative were there to answer questions, and so was Sheila Lambert from Councilman Ross's office.
Thank you.
When will this be completed?
The park? We, we have to start it by the 27th building permit, and then we had committed to the HOA that we would have it complete before the 75% of the building permits be imposed.
Okay.
So, and our, our logical construction would be to start down there, down there by the park, because, you know, you, we don't like construction traffic to be going through the, the community, so we'll start at the south end and then work our way north, so we would get to the park before you, we'd get out of the community. And we had also agreed to, if at all possible through Public Works, to do a entrance, a temporary access into this area off of Grand Tetons, so that we're not coming through the current neighborhood and disturbing the residents.
Make sure that the entrance to this park is accessible to a mom with strollers and...
Oh, yeah.
Or with a wheelchair, so they can get in and out with no problem.
We are going to have that, that one street that connects down to where the park is. That was part of our site plan redesign, because it, we originally had that going through, but the residents were concerned about all the traffic on that one street that it would've connected to, so we actually made that into a cul-de-sac, so that it would make it safer for the person.
One more quick question, at your neighborhood meeting about this, how many neighbors did you have?
We had multiple neighborhood meetings, when we had the meeting at the HOA office, it was, it was kind of a small room, but it was full. We, we had a good amount of residents. I think Councilman Ross's office, Sheila Lambert, actually had a meeting, and I want to say there was maybe six or seven of the residents who had called the Councilman's office, and then we also had the open house, which I, I don't know how many people came in and out, it was just kind of a two-hour span, and we just had people coming in and out.
Okay.
And if they had questions on the elevations or the floor plans and...
Thank you.
Real quick, you mentioned the, the beltway or Focus isn't doing it, but, for Public Works, is there a beltway alignment out here that this impacts, or?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, through you, we're currently actually working on the realignment of the beltway, so the beltway will no longer be going in this location, it'll be going to where we currently have right-of-way to build a beltway.
Okay, I'm, I'm just, you know, this may be a city attorney question, but I'm just curious if, if we're making a decision here on what was planned as a beltway with all these homeowners, and suddenly we, we approved this, and now we've just created a windfall for some private property owner or something.
See, and that's, I guess that's kind of the thing I always tell you, that you have to kind of look at what, what exists there now, you can't really determine what's gonna be built in the future, this beltway may never be built, and that's why.
Right, but typically, a residential developer plans out their property, and if they design a beltway, they've represented an off-ramp, you know, to the neighbor, so it's not like it's a, it's a new thing.
And if the beltway is built there, they'd have to condemn it and, you know, pay just compensation, you know, as we normally would.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
My name is Janet Love from KB Home.
Can you tell me about the, the block walls that will border this park? Because the pictures I'm looking at show a relatively short wall. And my question is, are they engineered so that they can be raised up, or the footing's substantial enough that that can happen?
We, we always have our, our walls, we always get wall calculations, you know, engineering for, for all of our walls, from a structural engineer. So, currently, there is a wall existing that closes off that property, and there's a, the homeowner directly next to the park, his, his wall comes up probably maybe a third of where that park area is. Our intent is not to, we as KB wouldn't, we don't want a wall in that park area, we'd like it to be open so that people can see it and walk over there. We can't control what the neighbor next door, if he decides to extend his wall at a later date, you know, that would be his option, and you'd have to get a permit through the city.
Do you happen to know how tall that wall is now?
It's a standard, like, six-foot-high wall, just a screen wall around the lot.
It doesn't look that tall, but you know how photos, how photos are.
Yeah, we, all of our, all of our walls are roughly six feet high, you know, we try to design all of our walls for pool codes, so if somebody decides to put a pool in.
Alright, if there are no other comments or questions, have a motion?
If there are no comments, I'm prepared to make a motion for approval of the agenda item number 10, WVR 39089.
There's a motion for approval for item 10, please cast your vote. And that is approved.
And I believe the other item is, Commandant Item, Agenda Item Number 11, the tentative map, 39088, again, following the recommendation of the staff, the motion would be for approval.
There's a motion for approval, if there are no other questions, please cast your And that is approved also.
And this matter goes forward to the City Council on October 20th.
And please note that Commissioner Goins abstained on both items. Alright, now we go to item 22, SUP 38523, applicant owner Hector Camacho for a proposed motor vehicle sales used, used at 4561 East Bonanza Road, Suite 130. We have an applicant here?
I, I don't see Mr. Camacho here.
Let's just trail this item.
And we'll, we'll attempt to contact him.
Okay. Let's go to item 23, SUP 39909, applicant owner, applicant Durango Market owner MNLK LLC, for a packaged liquor off-sale establishment used within an existing 2,326-square-foot central retail store, a general retail store at 6555, 6955 North Durango.
Mr. Chairman, this item was held in abance, in order to allow the applicant an opportunity to hold, host a neighborhood meeting, which the applicant did do. In regards to the staff report, the proposed use meets all Title 19.04 standards for a packaged liquor off-sale establishment, and can be conducted in a manner that is harmonious and compatible with the existing and surrounding land uses. As such, staff recommends approval of this location. If the request is denied, the proposal will not be permitted at this location.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners Nathan Taylor, representing the applicant. We did hold our neighborhood meeting as you requested a month ago, and we, it was very successful, generally speaking. I don't get this many people to show up to a neighborhood meeting. There were, I believe, 51 people in attendance, roughly, and two residents that expressed concerns, which we addressed at that meeting. We do accept staff's conditions, and we're here to answer any questions.
Thank you. This was advertised as public hearing, anybody here wishing to speak on this item, please come forward. Seeing no one, a closed public hearing. on this item, please come forward. Seeing no one, a closed public hearing. Commissioner? Commissioner Todd?
I have a few questions. Mr. Taylor?
Yes, Commissioner.
Good evening. Um, did you represent, uh, the owner back in 2004, when this initially came before the planning commission?
No, I did not.
Okay. Do you happen to know who did?
No, I do not.
Okay. It's my understanding, and I've reviewed some of the staff report from back in 2004, but it's my understanding that assurances were made that, uh, you wouldn't be seeking anything beyond the, the license that was, that was offered then. Do you know about that?
You know, I, I wasn't involved with this application at that time, Commissioner, and, uh, therefore, I'm just starting from when I became part of it, uh, earlier this year. And, uh, I, I always speak with, uh, my clients, uh, about, obviously, uh, being a good neighbor, being a, a good person of the community, um, and making sure that whatever they're doing, whatever they're applying for, uh, will in fact be harmonious and, uh, you know, be up to code.
Commissioner, uh-
Are you done, Commissioner?
I am.
Okay, thank you. Just a quick comment on this. I attended the neighborhood meeting on this item, and I know, um, this item's been held, um, it's been held a couple of times, uh, because of some concerns of the use. But, um, at that neighborhood meeting, as Mr. Taylor represented, there were about, about 51 people in attendance. Um, those folks, um, that did speak, um, were directly from the neighborhood. Uh, they lived within walking distance. Um, a majority of the repri- of the neighbors represented that they used this market on a daily basis. Um, some of them are on first-name basis with the store manager, uh, who I believe is in the audience. Um, if I remember, is it Sam?
Sam and Eddie.
Sam and Eddie.
They're both here, and the owner is here as well.
Got a good memory.
Mr. Thomas here as well.
So, it truly, it, it truly fits the na- the definition of, of what I felt, and this is my opinion, of, of a neighborhood market. Uh, to hear the residents talk how their kids know their kids, they come in and out of that market, they utilize it. Um, it's a market that lets them go get, uh, quick items without, um, having to get in the car and drive across a busy Durango into a Smith shopping center. Um, but there was a lot of contention to this item because of the request to sell, uh, I believe it's, it's the hard alcohol. It's already, has permission to sell beer and wine. Uh, the store's open on a 24-hour basis. Um, if you look at the police record, it, um, is it 24 hours?
I believe it closes at 10. Is that correct? Yeah, 10 o'clock.
10 o'clock?
Yes.
But, but there has not been a, a lot of complaints about this store, and, um, I'm of the belief that, that we should give this, um, operator an opportunity. Uh, even back in 2004, if it was said that, "This is what you're gonna do," we all know that the economy and, 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 and what goes on in the business environment causes people to have to change and adjust to what the market demands. And so, with that, um, I felt that it, my opinion would be, let's give this operator a chance. Uh, let's put a condition on here for, for a one-year review, um, and, and let's go from there. Now, there was a, a, a big issue in the meeting of, of loitering, and, and that was some concern to me. But after further discussion, what we found out is within that shopping center, there are other businesses that, uh, have a lot of foot traffic. I think there's a, um, it's not a mailbox except for, but I think it's like a-
It's similar to that.
It's like a postal, and it's also, there's a beauty salon that's there. And, um, the loitering, um, is, is not from the store. Uh, we even got into discussions of, of neighbors that come in and out of the market, and they see each other, and they stop and shake hands and hug in front of the market, and that is only a five or 10-minute exchange, and then people are on their way. So, a lot of the loitering was from the other businesses and not directly from this store. Um, last Saturday, I sat across the street from this store for about an hour in my car, just monitoring what's going on in and out, and I saw nothing that, that alarmed me to think that, um, you know, number one, uh, uh, people are going to be doing mischievous things here. I, I did see a lot of neighbors that actually, uh, come from behind the residential properties to the west of the store, and my assumption were, these were neighbors that were in the neighborhood coming to patronize the store. And so, I was quite, uh, happy to see that, uh, they're actually walking to and from and not, not utilizing the foot traffic. And that's what the blueprint of, of town center was when it was originally developed. Uh, a lot of uses are in the center of town. Uh, this is one of those live-work type, um, little, little centers where you have the, 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 the business on the bottom and could have the, the residential unit on top. So, I think what it was designed for is exactly what is happening there today, and, um, I don't see, um, I, I'm of the belief of, of giving this operator an opportunity to, to prove that he's going to operate, um, as he says he is. So, um, that's my concerns on it.
Commissioner, Commissioner Moody?
Just a quick comment to follow up on Commissioner Goins's thoughts. Um, we take these special use permits individually and on their own merit, and I think for good reason. Um, but I would echo some of the Commissioner's comments about some of the small operators, um, in many cases manage to, to control, supervise, and minimize any kind of mischief, uh, that goes on around there, and in many cases, better than some of the big-box stores that are particularly in the older, decaying neighborhoods. And especially the family-owned, little mom-and-pops, they have a particular, uh, interest in ensuring that, that they're well-run. So, I would concur with the Commissioner, as long as there's a period of review, whether it be administrative or otherwise, uh, to ensure that the, that the citizenry is well-protected. Thank you.
Commissioner Trowbridge?
And not to belabor the point, though, but when I see an attachment for a special use permit that has as an attachment, uh, a petition with 821 signatures in support of the request, I, I find that persuasive in and of itself, so.
Commissioner Moody?
Mr. Taylor, if I may?
Yes, Commissioner.
Can you tell me why you're seeking the change? You've, you've operated for approximately five years with beer and wine license. Why now packaged liquor?
Yeah, um, at the last meeting, I, I spoke about this, um, and I basically, it's interesting, oftentimes, you know, business owners, uh, you know, apply for these things, uh, for, for very different reasons. Um, this happened to, to come about because the, the neighbors actually came to the store and requested, uh, that we apply for this use because of a lot of the reasons that the other Commissioners had mentioned. Uh, you know, one of which was that, uh, there is a lot of pedestrian traffic around there, and one of the reasons was that the neighbors didn't like to have to cross that busy street, Durango, uh, you know, to, to go get a beverage and then walk home. Uh, so that was, that's how it came about, was really the residents came to us.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, uh, if we're ready for a, a vote?
Yes.
Um, I'm moving for denial of item 23.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor for denial. If there are any other comments, please cast your vote.
And, yes, Commissioner. Thank you.
And, in the absence of a, um, approval, can we have a motion in the affirmative?
Mr. Chairman, um, with all due respect to, to the Commissioner, I would, uh, move to approve this item, um, subject to all staff's recommendations. I'd also like to add another condition on here for a review period of, uh, one year. Uh, I'd like to bring it back before the commission and not an administrative, uh, just so we can make a record of, of the success or the failures of what happens after this is approved, if approved.
That condition would be that there shall be a one-year review following issuance of business license at a public hearing of the planning commission.
And there is a motion for approval with the amended condition. If there are no other comments, please cast your vote.
Thank you, Commissioners, thank you.
That is approved.
And that goes forward to the City Council on October 20th.
Uh, we still don't see, uh, the applicant on item 22, so we'll, we'll trail that for a few minutes of, of minds. Uh, item 24 and 25 are related items. 24 VAR 39068, applicant owner Roxanne Sheridan, to allow a zero-foot side yard setback where three feet is required at 2281 South Pioneer Way. And item 25, SUP 39069, for a proposed 1,088 square foot accessory structure, Class 1, with kitchen in, at same address. Staff recommends denial.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, the lot currently contains an existing 3,840 square foot residence and an unper- and an unpermitted accessory structure of 1,088 square feet of building area. Staff is recommending denial, uh, as the variance is self-imposed, uh, and there is no, uh, standard for hardship. Uh, staff also notes that, uh, that there is a secondary accessory structure that is present on the subject site. It's not included as part of this review, and staff has conditioned that all structures on-site, uh, obtain building permits. Uh, please note, we have received additional letters of support and protest since publication.
Good evening.
Hi. Um, I'm here on behalf of the owners.
Your name and address?
Bill Spalding, uh, the owner of Valley, California.
Address, I'm sorry?
Uh, I'm here on the address. My address is California, the owner of Valley, California.
Okay.
I work for the, the owners of, on their contractor in California. I'm over here on their behalf.
Okay, this was advertised as a public hearing. Anybody here wish to speak on this item? Seeing no, closed public hearing. Uh, obviously, you're familiar with the, the-
Yes.
...application and the conditions?
Yes.
Okay. Um, staff, have we, has somebody inspected this property?
Uh, yes, this was brought forward as part of a code enforcement complaint. But unfortunately, at this time, uh, the, our understanding is code enforcement has not able, been able to gain access to the site itself. Uh, this is only done from the perimeter of the property.
Okay.
Chairman, if I may?
Commissioner Quinn?
Yeah. Um, I met with, uh, Bill today, and I was out there for, um, a good, um, hour, 45 minutes. And what's happened here is he simply doesn't have a building permit. And, um, uh, to see that the two complaints that I have in my possession are coming from O'Bannon, which is not even behind it or next to it, um, are, they're kind of a little bit away from it. I would think that if there was, um, parties going on there, or if they were leasing the house out for events, the complaints would be coming from the existing neighbors on both sides. What they have here is a luxurious, well-maintained, um, older home that is magnificent. And the back, um, structure that you're talking about, yeah, it, it does have a kitchen in it, and it does look like it could possibly be a commercial kitchen. And Bill told me there was a wedding there a year ago, or whenever, and they had, um, a family reunion there. But, um, when a property is kept up this well and maintained this beautifully, um, there's absolutely no way I could shoot you down. But what I'd like to see is that you do what is right, and I'm sure you, your owner would want to do what was right, which is to, um, put a one-year, um, review on it, and not an administrative review, but a review where, where we, where we go out and look at it and, um, check the building permit. Because, you know, if one person in town needs to get a building permit for something like that, so do you. Um, I have to tell you that if anybody wants to out, look at something beautiful, it's this property. It's magnificent. Um, I spent a lot of time, I looked around, um, and like I said, if they're, uh, using it for parties, you'd have a lot more complaints than two in that quiet area. So, um, if my other Commissioners have anything else to say, um, I'm ready to make a motion.
Just, if I could.
Commissioner Trowbridge?
Yes, uh, do you have the support of the neighbors on either side and behind you?
Well, excuse me, the problem is, is the homes are deserted. The one next to them is, the people just left, and the one on the other side of them, they just rented it recently, 'cause I knocked on the doors. So, it's kind of a neighborhood that, um, it's beautiful. But, am I right, Bill?
Yes, the property directly behind it has been, um, has been abandoned for at least two years.
The two uses that were mentioned were a family reunion and a wedding reception. Were those commercial activities, or were they for relatives?
No, the wedding was approximately a year ago, and it was a friend of the family. They had a, a we- a small wedding there at the, at the property, and then approximately two to three weeks ago, they had a, uh, just a small 12 to 15 people family reunion there.
Okay. I, I have no problem supporting the request, provided there's a, an additional condition, that the accessory structure and the home itself never be used for, uh, commercial purposes.
Right. No, they don't. It's, it's their own private property.
And the house, the house is only, it's four bedrooms, four baths, three and a half baths, so it's not really big enough to rent out for like a big, you know, ridiculous party. But, um, I would like, what would that condition be, Margot?
Mr. Chairman, oh, wait, I believe there's... The potential condition, um, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, would be that there shall be a review in September of 2011 to ensure that all structures obtain necessary permits and final inspections, and there has been no neighborhood disruptions.
And that there will be, and it will never be used for commercial, um, is that the same thing? Okay. So, that, what?
Uh, there, uh, condition, uh, uh-
Item number seven has to do with the permits. This is the review to ensure that that-
Sir, are you waiting to talk on this item?
He asked about neighbors.
Oh, yeah, no, it's not too late. I mean-
Well, we, we close the public hearing. Are you a, a direct neighbor, or?
I'm the president of the HOA behind the property.
Please come forward. I'll open up the public hearing. We only have short time for public hearings. When you hear it, come on down. Thank you.
I'm not familiar with the process. Um, Tom Root, president of the HOA directly behind where the abandoned house has been abandoned for about a year and a half. Um, we've, there's been a few things that I mentioned that have happened to the house. I haven't had any of the neighbors in our community, the street behind, ever complain about it. So, I just wanted to-
That's really nice of you to come out here and say that.
You asked about neighbors, so I just wanted to, to share that.
Thanks for taking the time, really.
We're gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioner Goins?
Mr. Chairman, can I ask you, uh, is there a, is that house licensed to a, to a particular business?
Um, the owner is a attorney in California, and he may have, uh-
So, at least, does, 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 does critique antiques sound familiar to you?
Oh, no, that's, that, yes, that was Roxanne's business approximately 10 years ago. It no longer exists. Um, all she, it wasn't, that was just a mailing address. They had a little shop down on Sahara. Um, but not, that doesn't exist any longer.
Thank you. Okay, there is a motion for approval with the amended condition of the review. If there are no other comments or questions, please cast your vote. Okay, that is approved, and that will go on to, uh, City Council on October 20th.
Okay, thank you.
And now SUP 39069?
Same motion.
And the amended condition will be on the SUP on the use, please.
Okay. No, no. There is a motion for approval with the amended condition. Please cast your vote. And that is approved, and that will go on to City Council as well on, uh, October 20th.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Now, we're gonna go to item 26, and 27 are related items. 26 VAR 39122, applicant owner EV APS LLC to allow-
I think those were held. Commissioner, or Chairman?
Right, we did those.
I just finished those.
Right, so 28, isn't that good?
Oh, these two are held.
Right, there you go.
I'm sorry. Okay, now we're gonna go to our related items, 28, 29, and 30. 28 VAR 39148, applicant ACAB Taxi Company, owner Four Fours LLC, to allow a zero-foot side yard setback where eight feet is required for an accessory structure on 1.98 acres at 1,500 Sorrells Avenue. Item 29, SUP 39149, for outdoor storage accessory within the required setback and landscape buffer area along- buffer area along the west perimeter. Items 30, SDR 39147, for a proposed 10,800 square foot taxi cab limo yard with accessory vehicle service and auto repair where an 8,800 square foot taxi cab limo yard was approved.
Excuse me, Chairman, I'll be abstaining from these items. Thank you.
Okay. A proposed 5,000 square foot auto repair garage within a 3,000 square foot building was approved and to allow 24 trees within perimeter landscaping buffers where 37 trees were approved with waivers of perimeter landscaping buffer requirements to allow a zero-foot buffer along the portion of the east property line where eight feet is required and along the south perimeter where six feet is required.
Excuse me, Chairman, I need to say why I'm abstaining and it's because my husband did some consult with Mr. Kern and we had some business dealings on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, these requests are needed to accommodate proposed modifications to the subject site, which was previously approved as a taxi cab limo yard. The modifications include an increase in the size and the relocation of the building used for auto repair, the addition of an accessory structure adjacent to the east property line requiring approval of the variance, the relocation of storage containers resulting in an encroachment into a required setback area requiring approval of the special use permit, and reductions in the width of a perimeter landscape buffer along the east perimeter and the number of required perimeter trees for the site. Staff recommends denial of all the requests as the applicant has presented no evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance pursuant to Title 1918070 that would substantiate the requested variance. The requested waivers and exceptions could be alleviated by an alternate design that would conform to Title 19 requirements. If denied, site development would be allowed only as approved through the previous site development plan review, SDR 35195. If approved, the following condition changes should be made. Revised conditions are conditions number four and seven. It will be the date stamped on the plans only. Both conditions will be the site and landscape plan date stamped 9/2110. And then we can delete number 10 as the revised plans address that issue.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Bill Kern with the firm Ballard Spa located at 100 City Parkway here in Las Vegas. Those of you who have served here for the past year will recall this application when we were here just about this time a year ago. At that time, we had an appropriately zoned piece of property, but we did have some conditions to accommodate how we wanted to make use of it. Let me just begin by saying that at that time, we polled the neighborhood, we went to all the residences that are located to the east of us, we went to all the businesses that surrounded us. There were a few doors that we never got opened, but every single person we talked to was in support of the project, signed the petition which we submitted on that earlier item. I did bring a copy of it with me tonight if it adds anything. I can tell you it was SDR 35195, just for the sake of your record. But we had, I think, 54 or 55 signatures from virtually everybody who lives or does business in the area. Since that time, my client has gone to great lengths to be sure that he makes a compatible use of his property and does not pose a problem with the neighborhood. He has not only invited the residents and the people who do business there onto his property at a regular basis, he's gone to their homeowner association meetings or their, I'm sorry, resident association meetings. He's in good touch with his neighbors and I think the fact that they feel that this project, including the amendments we want to make tonight, are compatible with their uses is evidenced by the fact that I'm not aware that there are any protests. There was only one person who responded to the cards that were sent out and that was Channel 3. They did send a note indicating their approval and support for the project. There's a couple of things that I should also note at the outset about the property itself. This conforms to the downtown redevelopment plan. The site plan fits within all the guidelines with really one exception, two exceptions. Maybe I should focus on those.
Mr. Kern, before you proceed, I just wanted to, I'm an abstain on this item in asmuch as my daughter serves as the chairman of the Taxi Cab Authority, which regulates Mr. Nady's business and just being cautious.
Okay. Maybe I should point out one other thing. The application, I think just because of the way the code is written, says it's taxi cab and limos. I think the code treats them the same, but we don't have any limos. It's strictly taxi cabs, just so that you understand what the use is there.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kern, could you speak up a little bit? We have a couple commissioners having a hard time here.
I'm sorry to hear that.
There you go. It's football season.
So anyhow, we've made two things that I think are really the primary subjects of discussion here that you probably want to hear from me about. One is the fact that we have changed some of the landscaping along the east property line. We've done so for, it enables us to make a little more parking on the, and remain in conformity with the parking requirements. I can say, the code says what it says. We have complied with the code. The taxi cabs are out on the road. I mean, the code doesn't really reflect the reality. I mean, if we don't keep all those taxis there, if we did, we'd be out of business. Anyhow, no problem. We comply with the code anyhow. We tried to put in as much landscaping as we could. We tried to add as many trees as we could because we realized that we were going to be a little short on the number of trees. Let me just say one thing about that. You know, when you're using this as a taxi yard where you've got all your cars parked in there, trees unfortunately draw birds and birds unfortunately foul vehicles that are parked underneath them and it's just sort of a problem for us to have to keep cleaning those vehicles all the time. What the landscaping that we did sort of recognizes the fact that on the east side of our property, there is very mature landscaping with very large trees. You'll see where we put our trees are sort of in the areas where there's a gap in the trees on the other side. So either there's lots of trees on our side or lots of trees on their side, one way or another, there's not 100%, but generally pretty good coverage there. The second issue that I think raised some concern is the fact that there's a 81 square foot supervisor's billet there that when the taxi cabs pull in alongside the main building, there is a very small nine-foot by nine-foot building which contains some devices that help download all the information that the taxi cabs have to report on a daily basis. I understand the technology works much better if the devices sort of come at the taxi from both sides. There's lots of information that has to be downloaded, including film of everything that's happened, the meters, the amount, where the rides were picked up, where they were dropped off. There's lots of information that's required. And the machinery that does that, one of it's on the left side, the other one's on the right side, it gets it all at once. If the property was shaped differently, perhaps we'd have a little more design flexibility. But the very long, narrow shape of the property makes this sort of problematic. So we have tried to do the very minimum and nine-foot building that's going to be occupied during the time the shift changes while they're downloading the information is there and the rest of the time it will just be locked up. We have relocated some of the buildings. One of the things we did, for example, is discussion of the 3,000-foot building has been increased in size to a 5,000 square foot building. What we did was took 2,000 square feet that was adjacent, that was going to be for outside repairs and we have enclosed it so that all repairs will take place inside the building and you won't have anything going on out in the parking. I should talk about the repairs that are going to be done there. These are going to be minor type repairs, change a battery, change the tires. If a car gets into a crash or it's body shop kind of work, that's not going to be done here. That will be done someplace else. Staff, in fact, with regard to that, says indicate that this is a more aesthetically compatible and pleasing building. So anyhow, the last thing perhaps I should address are the storage containers. Those are on the perimeters of the property. I think they consume a little over 2,000 square feet. In fact, I can tell you it's exactly 2,240 square feet out of a nearly two-acre sized parcel, so it's a very small percentage. I don't know if I missed anything, but if you have any questions, maybe I'll just be quiet and respond to your questions.
Okay, thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience for or against this item? Please come forward. Mr. Farlow?
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 18th Street. Could we see the area map again on the overhead? The overhead shows that there's an additional area to the left of the long lot. Is that the addition that we're talking about?
If I can answer that...
Mr. Kern?
The answer is no, that's a landscaping property. Quite honestly, my client has tried to purchase that property because it would...
I just wanted, because it was... Then what is the addition? Where is the addition? Because you were previously approved. Now you want...
We're increasing the size of the building by taking...
Oh, you're increasing the size of the building?
Yes.
That's...
From...
When this was before, if I remember right, there was a chain link fence or something that came into discussion.
With Bob wire on it.
Could we have that discussed too, please?
I can address that.
Mr. Kern would like to speak to that? Thank you.
If I will. When my client got the property, there was concertina wire along the top of the fence on the west property line. That has been removed.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Open up the questions for commissioners. Commissioner Trobridge?
This project here has been around, like you said, for a year. But if we go back prior to that period of time when the project came to us, that was a parcel that had been sitting there for several years. So really, this needs to be treated as an infill project in the heart of the city that is in, someone is coming forward and trying to turn it into a tax revenue generating business operation that we so dearly need. And so it's on one side, it's got a storage lot towards the Cyril's side of the parcel and on the Gregson's side, it's got a landscaping firm, neither of which have a lot of public exposure. And so the absence of the landscaping and the setback variances give me no concern whatsoever. You know, the expansion of the building from 8,000, previously approved 8,000 square feet to 10,000 square feet to accommodate indoor maintenance of the vehicles as opposed to outdoor maintenance, I think is a positive move that should be encouraged for this type of operation. You know, the storage containers, I see those as a pretty creative use of building materials, frankly, and I think we're going to see more and more of that type of thing. You know, the rendering shows the actual, I can't tell whether it's the front or the back of the project, but the edge of the parcel that's on Cyril's is fairly heavily landscaped, which is an attractive addition to that particular street. And the western side, I'm sorry, the eastern side of the parcel that is shared with the housing authority has the additional landscaping, the 24 trees. And so having said all that, I think that the variances that are being requested and the waivers that are necessary to see this project go ahead are more than justified. And I think that the city would be well-served if we could see similar type improvements made to the parcels to the west at some point in time. You know, I think having some activity there is overall healthy for the environment down there, just a proper business use is better than vacant acreage sitting there like it did for so many years. So having said that, other comment?
Commissioner Evans?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Kern, you had me until you talked about the birds, the trees creating birds and I would respectfully disagree with you. That may be true, but I'm not sure it's a legal justification to minimize the landscaping. When I go back to the staff report and on agenda item number 30, the site plan, it indicates that you were approved to allow, it looks like, is it 24 trees where 37 were required or was it 24 trees you're putting in where 37 were requested?
We're, I believe it's we're putting in 24 where 37 were required. If I can just add one thing before you leave that point, Commissioner. Understand that this is all in the interior of a project that really is not going to be visible from the street or any place else.
Well, that was my next question is, I'm trying to orient myself. Where is the Grant Sawyer Building in relation to this?
It would be, well, maybe four or five lots to the west.
Okay. So if you're traveling down Bruce or Washington, you actually do not see this, right?
That's correct.
What about, I note on the map, it has Classic Car Lane. Isn't that where Mr. Rogers has his little museum?
On the property up on the north side there, that is parking for Channel 3. On the south side, the Gregson, that's where the car museum is.
Are all of the surrounding businesses in agreement with you on this item, do you know?
To my knowledge, yes. A year ago, they signed our petition. I believe my client is in pretty good contact with them.
Because I guess my thing is that if you provide a sufficient amount of landscaping and there isn't a detriment to the surrounding businesses or people traveling down those heavily traveled streets, I wouldn't have nearly as much of a problem with it. But I would remind you that part of my issue is when you're putting in that asphalt and you don't have the tree canopy, you end up creating the heat island that we've gone to great lengths in this community and at least in the city of Las Vegas to try to minimize and mitigate through the use of shade canopies. So I don't know if that's a factor in this or not.
You have a very legitimate point, Commissioner. In this case, we have constraints created by the shape of the property. We've done some other things. We've put up a canopy ourselves, you know, a fabric type canopy to cover some of the vehicles there and do things like that. But they try to manipulate the cars in and around the trees and, I mean, it just is a, the problem created for use of the property far outweighs any benefit from trees that would not be seen by the public.
Commissioner Hoot?
Just a small point here. I want to echo some things that Commissioner Evans has talked about regarding the landscaping and would add to it, you know, it may be insignificant to go from 37 to 24 for purposes of what you're here today, but we multiply that across the valley and we begin to see a problem that the city of Las Vegas is trying to curb and that is going forward... a problem that the city of Las Vegas is trying to curb, and that is going forward with sustainability. And I just want to make sure that we do everything we can, even though you may be somewhat isolated and there may not be a whole lot of people to see the beauty of the landscaping, it has a lot of other positive qualities on its own. And I know we've talked about the indoor maintenance, that will be there as a result of increasing the size of the building. I think that can be used to counteract any negative effects of birds in the trees.
Mr. Chairman, through you real quick.
Mr. Kern, is there any, Kerns, is there any way that you could have bumped that number up?
We have been through this so many, the proverbial six ways to Sunday, trying to find a way to put as many trees into this as we can. I wish, you know, I always try to accommodate the requirements, but we've done, really, I think we've done the best we can here, sir. Trying to put in more trees would very much hinder the use of the property.
Commissioner Trowbridge?
If I could, I'll step back a second from this particular project and talk about the environmental concerns as a bigger project. Heat islands fall in the overall category of environmental issues, as does water consumption. You know, it all fits together. On a project of this size, give or take a few trees, becomes subservient to the water consumption associated with those trees, not only for the survival of the trees, but also because of the somewhat joking comment about trees bring birds. The existence of the birds causes the vehicles to have to be washed far more frequently. And so, you've got the unnecessary water consumption associated with the increased washing of the vehicles, plus keeping the trees that are there alive. And the net impact by requiring the additional trees is more than offset. You've got to look at it as a total package.
And I don't want to be unreasonable in this regard, but I disagree to some extent in that this community, long before we had air conditioning, had lots of trees. And, you know, I've thrown this statistic around longer than people care to hear, but when I first joined this commission nine years ago, the data said that our average nighttime temperature in the city of Las Vegas is 10 degrees higher than it was 10 years prior. And they attribute that directly to asphalt and the fact that as we built, like on steroids, we haven't had enough of a tree canopy. And I think, just from a philosophical point of view, yes, the trees do require some water, but it also helps lower the overall temperature and it cleans the oxygen in the air. And if you have a lower temperature, you have less water usage for trees and turf and all that sort of thing. I think this project is somewhat isolated. It's not really on the public, you know, right away, and I would be more than willing to, you know, find some reasonable accommodation, because I think you do make a point. But I do want to make a philosophical, as well as a practical, argument in that by itself, as Commissioner Hooton said, it probably is not really egregious. But you multiply that, particularly when we were building like crazy throughout the valley, and suddenly you have a big problem, a big issue. And, you know, they used to call me the tree hugger, and I guess I am. But I think that there are far greater positive consequences than not for putting them in. And one last point about the trees. Unfortunately, when we've gone to ziriscaping around many of the projects, the older projects that had turf, we've never regulated the water usage of the trees that exist. And it's really disheartening to me to go around the valley and see trees that are dying because they're not sufficiently watered, because they've taken the turf out, and in some cases, just stop irrigating them altogether. It's something that we haven't addressed. It makes me a little crazy. And again, on your project, and I don't want to belabor it, I think you make a good point to try to find some common ground, and I think you make a point. But I do think that compounded by every apple that comes through here that wants to reduce or minimize what our code suggests is the way that we should build our community, does become a problem. So, that's my slip-up.
One more comment.
Mr. Trowbridge? I'm going to give you due diligence, because you're the park guy.
I know. It's kind of interesting to have two tree huggers, one arguing for and one arguing against. But here we go. The fact of the matter is that this project does not involve any additional asphalt. All the asphalt that's there has been there in excess of the 10-year period that you've been here, so the net increase is zero.
Because through the older parts of our community, and you'll see asphalt everywhere and no trees, you would think, I used to always say, at some point in time, it was as if trees were kryptonite to our species. In the 60s, we didn't put them anywhere. And so, yes, I agree. We're not adding asphalt, but we have an opportunity to mitigate this. I want to be reasonable. I don't want to be unreasonable. You say you can't add to that number. I think you can add to it a little bit, but we'll see how the chips fall.
Right. I think the applicant, and thank you both, Commissioners, great comments. I think the applicant did mention 24 trees is committed to be put on there. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Good. I visited the site yesterday with the owner of the property. I spent about an hour out there. And just from my observation, when you entered the site, and I entered off of Gregson Avenue, which would be to the south, the Housing Authority, which has a residential property to the east, actually cut their trees. I was kind of surprised to see that, because it used to be full foliage, but I don't know if that's because of this time of the year to cut trees. But they did cut the trees, which, to me, took a little bit away from what, just like Commissioner Evans was saying. However, the applicant has complied with our request, but I wanted to ask staff, on this, has there anything that this applicant has failed to do that we've asked them to do to this point?
At this point, building permits have not been obtained for all the structures on site, as required from the previous site plan.
Would that be the nine-by-nine shed Mr. Kern was talking about?
I don't believe that's been constructed yet. That would be for the paint booth. That's the questionable item. There was a paint booth constructed prior to the original site plan review. I'm not sure what the status of those permits are at this moment. They may be in, they may not be in, but they weren't previously.
I took a look at that paint booth, and it's actually not constructed. It's actually a prefabbed building that was put up there, and the applicant told me that he is going to get that permitted and comply with all the requests that we've asked of him. And that's what I wanted to get on the record tonight for Mr. Kern, that he will comply with that.
I don't want to create a civil war here, because from my client's standpoint, they've been trying to do that, but they've been told by Building Department, you've got to get your zoning first before we can approve it. Zoning has said, you've got to get your building. The architect, I wish our architect could be here tonight to explain, but we are ready, willing, and anxious to do that. I mean, this paint booth, by the way, you know, they're not going to be running a wholesale line of cars through there.
No, no, no. I looked at that paint booth, and I asked him about it, and it's just for little dings and dongs. You are able to get one vehicle into that booth. It's a kind of a metal insulated-type booth. I have a picture of it here on my phone, but, and it has a blower out on the side, so I was good with that. I don't think you can get major stuff going on there. The applicant did represent to me that he's doing nothing major there. He's off-site to do all of his oil changes and things of that nature. On the north side, up on the backside of Channel 3, I noticed that he did move the shipping containers. I think it was, we were required to move them 10 feet, 10 foot in from the fence back there. But by doing that, it created this little alleyway that's almost like a trash collector back on that side. We talked about the fence to the west, and the applicant says he has agreed to put that in, because a substantial amount of money will be put towards that to improve that. But what I really looked at was on the entrance to the south side, where he has those shipping containers, which are going to be moved, and there's going to be a wall constructed there at the front of the property. Now, he explained to me that that wall will match the same materials that are on the building across the street, which is the building where Mr. Rogers houses a lot of his antiques, and that'll be matching. And I think that'll help the aesthetics of that corridor. But he did explain to me that that sidewalk is going to be significantly, it's going to have a curb and gutter, it's going to be a sidewalk, but it'll be significantly wider than the sidewalk that is to the east. Is that correct?
Yes. But before you get too far away, let me say just one thing so that I don't mislead you. The containers will stay where they are, the wall will be built in front of it towards the sidewalk.
Okay.
And it was also a note that we submitted a new site plan earlier this week. After we saw the staff report, I think it was Condition 10, I forget on which one of the items, it suggested that we should submit a new site plan to provide sidewalk all the way up to the fence. We immediately did it so that it would be on record before we got here today.
Is there any way to get any, I know that wall's going up, but is there any way to get any landscaping into that area where that sidewalk's going to be?
Well, this is another point of history. We originally, this is the danger of having lawyers design a plan. I originally asked them to show that area as landscaped and not with a sidewalk. When we were before City Council, they wanted the landscaping out and the sidewalk in, so that it would connect to the sidewalk that's to the east of us. I don't know that it'll ever go any further to the west, because it'll hit the state building, and the state building isn't sidewalked. But that decision was made, and we tried to comply, so we've done what we can in that regard.
Well, between now and City Council, go back and look at that and see if there's at some way that, because, you know, because as you're coming down Gregson, it's a picture of street. It's a pretty nice little street when you come down there. And I'd like to see that try to continue as far down to the west as possible. And I understand you can only go as far to that landscape company, and I understand the state's probably not going to pay their portion. But I still think with the width of that sidewalk, there's still an opportunity to get landscaping, whether, I'm not talking about big box trees, maybe some planner or planner-type landscape there, just to accent the front of the building. Because the contrast is going to match what's across the street. And I think if we can get a little landscape there, I think that'll do you some good.
When we were before the Planning Commission a year ago, you favored the landscaping. When we went to the City Council, there was rather firmly...
Sidewalk.
The side of the, should be sidewalk.
Yes. Commissioner Evans?
Just one further parenthetic comment. If I'm not mistaken, this was all part of the old Helen J. Stewart Ranch, including the Grant Sawyer Building. And when, before the Grant Sawyer Building, of course, it was, I think, Fantasy Park. You probably remember that, Commissioner. And from what I've read, the actual Las Vegas Creek or Little Creek ran through the property, and there were artesian wells down through there. So it's got a bit of a history to it. When they did the Grant Sawyer Building, they actually used the dry creek bed to try to mimic what the old creek did. It's a, it is actually the birthplace of the city, that whole area. I know it's fairly industrial now, but when you look back at the old pictures, it was quite picturesque. High-water table in there as well. Thank you.
So without that, I mean, I thought those shipping crates were going away. He told me they were going away, but they will be...
They're going to be...
Behind the wall.
Yeah, they're going to be behind the wall, and they're going to be finished in a way that's consistent with the car museum on the south side of the street.
Okay. With that, I have no more questions. I'll entertain a motion at this time.
If there's no other...
Mr. Trowbridge?
No other questions regards to Item Number 28, Variance 39148. I would make a recommendation for approval, subject to all conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval. A yes vote is vote yes on Item 28. Cash your vote. And that motion has passed with Commissioners Quinn and Truesdale abstaining.
In regards to Item Number 30, Site Development Review 39147.
Item 29. We have 28, 29, and 30.
You betcha. Item Number 29, Special Use Permit 39149, make a motion for approval, subject to all staff conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval of 29. A yes vote is for the approval. And that motion has been approved with Commissioners Truesdale and Quinn abstaining. Item 30?
In regards to Item Number 30, Special Site Development Review 39147, make a motion for approval, subject to all staff conditions as amended.
Motion on the floor for approval of Item 30. A yes vote is for the approval. Cash your vote. And that motion has passed with Commissioner Quinn and Truesdale abstaining.
And these matters will go forward to the City Council on October 20th.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Item 31, Issue P. 38860, applicant Cardenas Market, Inc., owner Lamanza LLC, for a 500-square-foot accessory package liquor off-sale use within a proposed 66,926-square-foot retail establishment, grocery store at 4700 Meadows Lane.
Mr. Chairman, the accessory package liquor off-sale use is permitted in the C1 Limited Commercial Zoning District with an approved special use permit. The proposed use will be conducted in conjunction with a proposed grocery store and meets all Title 19 requirements. Staff recommends approval with conditions. If denied, the applicant may proceed with the grocery store use, but will not be permitted to sell alcoholic beverages. Please note there are additional letters of protest and support for this item since publication.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Commissioner and Commissioners. Darren Trone for Cardenas Markets, 3838 Orange Street, Riverside, California, 92501. We also have Lendell Mains, the architect here, and Marco Robles, who's the Director of Public Affairs for Cardenas Markets. This is a 500-square-foot accessory package liquor application within a 67,000-square-foot market. It's going to be less than 1% of the floor space. It's going to assist the market in remaining competitive in that area with similar retail market establishments in the Las Vegas area. Cardenas has read the conditions, understands the conditions, and agrees to all staff conditions. The separation out there is good. Looking at the maps, there's no over-concentration. I don't think there's any other package liquor license in that area. And with that, we'd ask the commission to approve a staff's recommendation.
Thank you. This was advertised public hearings. Anybody here wish to speak on this item, please come forward. I'll go ahead and give you some time to respond. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I just want to say that this business put a grocery store in near where I am, did a nice job in an old food-for-less, and super-nice, and I'm really glad to see this lot get occupied again. Thank you.
Cardenas ain't no food-for-less.
Anybody else wish to speak on this item? Go ahead and close the public hearing. How many stores do you have locally?
This would be the third store.
How many stores in the total chain?
This is number 30.
Okay. Commissioner's comment?
I visited your store that Mr. Farlow is talking about, and it's just lovely, and it's the perfect thing to come into Ward 1, and we're really excited to have you. So, if my Commissioners have nothing to say about it, I'm ready to make a motion for a... if my Commissioners have nothing to say about it, I'm ready to make a motion for approval.
Thank you.
There's a motion for approval. If there are other questions, please cast your vote. And that is final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days.
Thank you very much.
Item 32, SUP 38996, applicant RP Slots, Inc., owner Charleston Heights Shopping Center, LLC, for a gaming establishment, general business-related, 10 gaming devices within an existing 6,440-square-foot general retail store at 542 South Decatur Boulevard.
Mr. Chairman, staff is recommending approval of this application as the proposal meets the Title 19 minimum requirements, with the conditions as written in, it's compatible with the surrounding land uses. If the application is denied, the existing 6,440-square-foot general retail store would remain without gaming. Please note, we have received additional letters of support since publication. Staff would like to revise one condition, Condition Number Six, to delete the section that says such separation shall consist of a full wall. The applicant has a partial pony wall that separates the restaurant from the drugstore, and if the pony wall were to continue to the front of the store, that would act as a barrier between the two uses.
Good evening.
Good evening. Rogers Epalack, 542 South Decatur. I'd just like to give you a little bit of history on the location. The Decatur Drug Store and the Decatur Drug Restaurant have both been in business, both with slot machines, since the early 1960s. When they opened, throughout the 60s through 2007, there was complete ingress egress between the two locations with no problem. I personally entered into escrow to purchase both businesses in 2007. During that process, the issue of ingress egress was first raised. And in order to comply with all of the various regulatory parties' wishes, I installed a four-foot-high pony wall with a locking gate to separate the two locations. This allowed the patron to see over the wall, but if they wanted to visit the other side, they had to go outside, walk down the sidewalk, and go back in the main doors. Both city and state were satisfied with the solution. I closed escrow on January 1st of 2008 with all the necessary approvals. Everything went along fine until February of 2009. At that time, I had contracted with an individual to sublease the pharmacy. He was a licensed pharmacist, because the pharmacy had been empty. During that process of him getting his business license, the state gaming regulators ruled that since I was no longer the primary business operator, I could no longer operate gaming in the location. So consequently, I surrendered the gaming license for the drugstore only. I kept the gaming license in the restaurant. At that point, without having gaming on both sides, the need for the gate was no longer a real need, so I removed the gate and allowed free access back and forth. And in order to get the gaming back in the drugstore, I had basically three choices. First was to have the pharmacist operate the gaming, which he wasn't keen on doing. Secondly was to contract with a third-party slot route operator, which would have violated my underlying lease, and secondly, it just didn't make a lot of business sense for me. The third option was to create my own slot route company, which I did, RP Slots. What I want to do here is get the slots back in the drugstore the way they had been for however many years, and the only modification I would make, staff's recommendation, is rather than completing the pony wall, I want to put a locking gate back in there the way I had it in 2007. It'll achieve the same goal, which is to prevent customers from going back and forth from one side to the other, but it'll allow me during the closing hours, when I do my slot drop, to not have to take the slot boxes outside.
Thank you. Commissioners?
So, in other words, you have to put the wall back in in order for your place to function normally?
The wall is there-
I mean, the gate.
The gate. I have to put the gate back.
Otherwise, when one side closes, the other side has to-
Actually, I coordinate the operating hours. They're both open from 7:00 in the morning till midnight.
Oh, okay.
And so they both close at the same time. But what staff has asked is for me to extend the pony wall. What I'd prefer to do is-
Just the gate.
Put the gate back in the way I had it before, because it allows me to have access back and forth with the cart full of slot boxes.
Well, that makes perfect sense to me.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Quinn?
Can I ask staff, what's the difference between the pony wall and the gate? They achieving the same objective, correct?
The gate, there's no way for staff to ensure that gate is closed during business hours. We don't have the manpower to man that gate. That's the issue. The pony wall would create a separation of uses as required for both the address of this location has, both the restaurant and the pharmacy have separate addresses, would ensure separate addresses, and would ensure that there's no mixing of the two uses.
Well, how about if we just do a six-month review, and you pop in when he doesn't know you're coming, and see if that-
If I could say, as a licensee, I'm subject to a lot of regulations that staff can't check on daily. It's incumbent upon me to ensure that they are complied with.
But, you know, I think my perspective here is, I understand the staff changing the condition from a full height, but a separate address is a separate address, a separate business is a separate business. And by having the gate, there's just perceptions that, you know, any slot route operator knows that they go in and out of businesses to do their count and their drops. So I think as the state's looked at this-
The state is comfortable with it, and both the city and the state were comfortable with the gate back in 2007. That was what I was asked to do at that time, was to put in a pony wall with a gate.
But apparently, somebody opened up Pandora's Box.
Well, that's-
I mean-
I'm not sure who. I'm not sure who.
I don't have a problem with your gaming use there. I just think the gate is just a potential shortcut that doesn't fit with the spirit of what we're, at least what I see personally.
I'll ask a question. Commissioner Chairman, through you. Can you tell me how much all this, do you mind indicating how much all this costs, or ballpark, you know, was it, were there additional fees and-
To, from the day I had to surrender my license? Do you really want to know?
Well, I don't want to know. I'm curious because it sounds like-
Between investigative fees, application fees, I'm in this north of $70,000.
And all you're seeking is some relief from the condition, you want the gate instead of the pony wall?
Yes.
And just bear with me, you used to have the gate, and that was what was recommended?
Correct.
And then when you leased the pharmacy, the rules changed?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Do you have any photos of the gate or pony wall? They're not included in our packet.
I can, I have a drawing of what the gate will look like. Pony wall is your standard four-foot-high-
Can you put it on the center, right there on that square? Can we go to the overhead? Thank you.
Two metal poles on either side, the solid wood core door in between, locking, double deadbolt. It's actually more secure. The first gate I put in there, the contractor did not do a good job on it, and so I took it out. This is going to, this'll last.
Does that door automatically close? Is there a spring hinge on it that-
It hasn't been constructed yet, but my understanding is it will, you'll unlock it, open it, and then pull it closed behind you. But it'll only, I'll have the only key. It'll only be opened on the one morning of the week when I'm doing the drop.
So help me understand this, because I'm picturing a pony wall approximately four feet tall, and then all of a sudden you have a door that-
No, no, no. The gate is, the gate will be four foot high as well.
Oh, I see. And it's solid wood?
What did he spec out? He spec'd out a solid core wood door. That's my contractor.
Can you see this door right here?
Uh-huh.
Is it anything like that?
No. It'll have metal pole in the ground, metal pole in the ground, the door attached to this metal pole, deadbolt, deadbolt.
I mean, so really, if you wanted to get from one side to the other, when I say "you," you as the owner, you could hop the pony wall. It's just a little easier to go through the gate.
I suppose I could hop a four-foot pony wall if I felt athletic, yes. You haven't seen my customers lately. They're not hopping pony walls.
Mr. Chairman, just one quick question. Let's move this forward, please. But what's the purpose again?
Of having the gate versus the pony wall?
What's the purpose of having anything?
A wall period.
Is it to keep kids out? Is it to keep your businesses separate?
As I understand it, there is some regulation that I have never been able to locate the number of, that requires that if you have gaming, two adjacent gaming locations, it's not allowable for customers to be able to go from one gaming location to another gaming location without leaving the premises.
Because otherwise, you have a virtual casino.
That's right.
I mean, that's the bottom line.
Which-
You could have a 35-slot machine-
Existed for-
-bar, which isn't what you're licensed for, it isn't what you're licensed with the gaming for.
But recognize that it was that way for-
What was was, and what now is now, and-
Understood.
I think-
I'm not, I understood.
Yeah. And, you know, from the idea, my perspective, from making the count, if you want to stick the money boxes on the top of the wall, and you're-
That's what I would have to do.
Just the spirit of this is, having a gate, to me, just says it's wide open. It's just perceptions.
Okay.
It's perceptions.
I think it complies with the spirit, pretty much so.
I don't think we're in the position to be approving locations with more than 15 machines. And that's where I think if we didn't have this solid barrier, I think what staff's recommendation of is a pony wall was a good compromise to try and deal with the reality of where you were.
Just to let everyone know, my application was heard by the Nevada State Regulators this month, and they approved it with the gate.
Okay. Well, if I may make a motion.
Commissioner Quinn?
I'd like to make a motion for approval, because I find it hard to believe you'd do anything to jeopardize your gaming license. And so my motion is for approval of SUP 38996, with all staff's recommendations.
If I may?
With all recommendations?
If I may, if, Chairman?
Yes, Director.
To the maker of the motion, Condition Six requires the complete separation of units 542 and 544 South Decatur. The separation, if I'm understanding your direction, the separation count shall consist of a pony wall with a lockable gate that shall remain locked during all business hours, impeding the access between the two suites, and shall be completed prior to the installation of any gaming machines. All necessary building permits shall be obtained and final inspections completed in compliance with Title 19, as required by the Building and Safety Department.
And you concur with that, Roger?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Evans, one more question. So you said you're the only one with the key?
Correct.
What happens on a day when you can't make it, or for some reason?
You're set.
The machines don't get dropped. I own the machines. I don't have a slot route operator, so it's my money. So nobody has the key except me. So if I'm sick, the drop doesn't get done. I mean, seriously. In two and a half years, I haven't missed one.
My motion stands.
Okay, there's a motion. Please cast your vote. And that is approved, and that's final action in the absence of an appeal.
Thank you.
Item 33, SUP 39146, applicant owner Great Wash Park, LLC, for a liquor establishment tavern within a 28.69-acre mixed-use development, with waivers to allow a distance separation of 141 feet from a city park, and to allow a zero-foot distance separation from a similar use, where 1,500 feet is required at 440 South Grand Park.
Mr. Chairman, the proposed use will be located within a large mixed-use development that is currently under construction, and is permitted in the C2 General Commercial Zoning District with an approved special use permit. The liquor establishment tavern use complies with all Title 19.04 requirements and can be conducted in a manner that is harmonious and compatible with existing surrounding development and land uses. Therefore, staff recommends approval with conditions. Please note, there are additional letters of protest and support for this item since publication.
Good evening.
Good evening. Laura Dreia, 520 South Forest Street, here on behalf of the applicant, Great Wash Park, who is applying for this OPA Taverna, which is located on Parcel 8 in a mixed-use development of 29 acres. As Mr. Gabecki had mentioned, that we are requesting a waiver of 140, or to allow 141 feet from a park, where 400 would otherwise be required. That is measured from property line of the upper easternmost corner of the property to the southwesternmost point of the park. So it's 141 feet from this point to this point. We certainly exceed that at the tavern, which is located here. And then the zero-foot waiver to other taverns will allow us to locate adjacent to a lounge, which is located on the golf course property, as well as other taverns, which are to be located within Tibbely Village. We accept the conditions of approval and ask for your support as well.
Thank you. This was advertised public hearing. Anybody here wish to speak on the side, please come forward. Seeing no one, close the public hearing. Commissioner?
If there's no questions, I'm ready to make the motion. In regards to item number 33, Special Use Permit 39146, make a motion for approval, subject to all staff conditions. And it sure looks like it's going to be a nice addition to our restaurant row area.
Please cast your vote. And that is approved, and that is final action in the absence of an appeal. We're going to go back to item 22, if the applicant's here. If not, it's a pleasure of the commission.
Mr. Chairman, we did try and attempt to contact the applicant. You left a message on the applicant's phone.
Well, this has been held, obeyed-
This would be the second abeyance of this item.
Yeah, he is here.
Isn't that him?
Nope. Okay. I'm going to go ahead and open it, because like I say-
What numbers?
Just not showing up and lingering isn't an automatic extension.
22.
Item 22, SUP 38523, applicant owner Hector Camacho for a proposed motor vehicle sales use at 4561 East Bonanza Road.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is proposing to convert a 2,000-square-foot storage area of the existing 16,250-square-foot auto repair garage major use into a motor vehicle sales use. Placing additional use on the subject property in addition to the existing approved uses creates an overly developed site and will negatively impact the surrounding neighborhood. Per Title 19.04, the minimum of special use permit for an auto repair garage major, no vehicles may be parked on the premises for the purpose of offering the vehicle for sale. Approval of this special use permit request would circumvent this requirement of the previously approved special use permit, SUP 3223. Therefore, staff recommends denial of this request. This application is denied. The existing auto repair garage major building in use for storage would remain.
Thank you. Is the applicant present? Seeing no one, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anybody wish to speak on the side, please come forward.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I'm absolutely against this, because Mr. Camacho has been before the city council time and time and time again, and he just doesn't want to play by the rules. It's code enforcement over and over and over again. How much, how many times do you have to deal with this before something, action is taken? I mean, if a guy can't play by the rules, if he comes before this commission, promises something, and then doesn't do it, where, what remedy do you have? The remedy is, don't deny him, or don't give him anything else until he does.
Anybody else wish to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Evans?
I absolutely do not want to obey this, given that I believe that we've given every opportunity and notice for it to be heard. My thought is, perhaps we could table the item. If Mr. Camacho wants to bring it forward, he could reactivate it. So that's my thought.
What, for the city attorney, anything we do, how do we stop what is a lot of bad acts going on here? I mean, there is no real-
We have our code enforcement section. You could also, you know, deny this action. I mean, we would like for him to be given the opportunity to be heard, but you have the ability to deny it tonight if you'd like to. He's been called. He was fairly noticed. He chose-
He chose, he chose for some reason not to show up tonight. You can table it, obey it, deny it. It's really at your discretion what you'd like to do. But normally for acts like this, we have code enforcement, and I think he's probably been cited a number of times. I know on other properties. I don't know about this one in particular.
Then it may be appropriate to table this and make him reapply, renotice?
I think he just has to reactivate the application. He would not have to...
Or activate and renotice. Obviously, they...
And there's a fee associated with that, so he'd have to pay that renotice fee.
But the extended, you know, delays, it's just trying to take advantage of the neighbors and the good nature of the city. So I think obeying this is appropriate.
No, no, not obeying.
I mean, table.
Table.
But there also is some real serious public safety issues. You've got rebar sticking up out of the ground, according to these pictures, that if anybody remembers, there's been several children in this community fall on rebar and killed. But, I mean, if Mr. Camacho doesn't care about the safety of his employees and the neighbors, I think code enforcement really needs to look at how...
I can share there are multiple open code enforcement complaints on this property, and code enforcement and the city attorney's office are currently involved in actions against the property.
Mr. Chairman, I was prepared to look at the legal aspect of the special use permit and what our code provides and does not provide, and the staff report is fairly compelling and the findings are out there. But I agree with the city attorney. I think that, you know, Mr. Camacho should be heard, and I certainly don't want this to result in litigation. So my motion would be to table Agenda Item Number 22. If the applicant wishes to come forward, he can do what he needs to do to bring it back before us again, but in the meantime, it's gone. Motion to table.
Motion is to table this item. Any other comments? Please catch your vote. And that is approved to be tabled, and we'll deal with it later.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner.
Mr. City Attorney, Mr. Scott, I was looking at that last fill report. I think it was in June. So if you continue to cite him, cite him, cite him with code enforcement, and nothing seems to happen, at what time, what timeframe does it cease and desist or recommend putting the applicant out of business?
Those cease and desist letters go out all the time. And what we have to do, there's a particular process you have to utilize. You have to cite, you have to give them the opportunity, first you have to cite them or give them a notice to comply. Then they have to be given an opportunity to comply. If they don't, then you cite them and you cite them, and then after, and then at some point, our criminal division will get involved, and they'll actually prosecute him, and the court will have to determine exactly what the ramifications are or what his penalty would be for not following city code.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to go to item 34, SUP 39219, applicant Opportunity Village Owner Afton Meadows LLC for a proposed 25,062 square foot thrift shop nonprofit within an existing building at 4600 Meadows Lane.
Mr. Chairman, staff finds the proposed use to be compatible and harmonious with the surrounding uses and recommends approval. Please note, we have received additional letters of support since publication.
Good evening.
Hi, Bill Rizley, Opportunity Village, 6050 South Buffalo. We're looking to put a temporary thrift store in for approximately two years until we can get the one that burned down repaired, rebuilt.
Thank you. This was advertised as public hearing. Anybody wish to speak on the side, please come forward. Seeing no one, close public hearing. Commissioner Quinn?
Yeah, I understand your predicament and fully am aware that you need to find a place until your place is rebuilt. This will be a good location for you. It'd also be good for the shopping center. So with that, I would make the motion for approval. And what I'd like to do is put a two-year review on it to see where you're at, and then that way we'll see, you know, if you need more time or not.
Yes.
Because we appreciate what you do for the community. So I'd like to make a motion for approval with a two-year review on item number SUP...
Before the motion is completed?
What?
Commissioner Evans?
Yes, thank you. Did I miss, one of the conditions was the outside bins. I'm sorry, did you address that? And I was curious if that was a critical element of your operation. The staff report suggests that the majority of your donations are through trucks that Opportunity Village uses. Is that a hill to die for for you, or is that something that, because I think our code tries to anticipate people throwing old sofas and junk out there like on weekends or days or nights when your clothes... Can you address whether that's something that is a critical element of your success?
Yes, we do. Most of our donations are picked up or called in, and they're picked up, and we do have some that are dropped off. We will have at least one large dumpster in the back, and that's where the donations will take place. All the donations will be on the backside. So no donations will be taken on the front side, so there won't be, you know, clothes stacked up and that kind of thing in the front.
Okay, and then our conditions of approval, it simply says, "Number four donation shall only be delivered and accepted during hours of operation." So that's not an issue, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
And nothing will be stored outside, right?
No.
Yes. And Commissioner Quinn, I didn't mean to interrupt your motion. I just wanted to clarify that.
Oh, you can interrupt me anytime, Commissioner Evans.
And I think I speak for all of us that we're very happy that you'll be back in business and your clients will be back employed.
We thank for all your support.
So my motion is for approval of SUP 39219 with a two-year review to see how you're doing and if we can help you out anymore.
So that would be, there shall be an administrative review two years after issuance of the business license.
Correct.
In order of the comments, motions for approval with the amended conditions, please catch your vote.
Mr. Chairman, I'm having a computer problem, so I'll do a verbal yes vote. Okay.
And that is approved, and this is final action in the absence of an appeal. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
35, SDR 39117, applicant Richmond American Homes, owner RB Hillside LLC, to add an alternate model home plans and to allow an eight-foot drainage setback for six feet or less, or 18 feet or greater. These are the driveways at the southwest corner of Alexander Road in Clark County, 215.
Mr. Chairman, the proposed garage setback of eight feet would encourage residents to park in the driveway, resulting in blockage of sidewalks and streets. As approved, six feet or less discourages residents from parking in the driveway, and 18 feet or greater can accommodate driveway parking without sidewalk or street obstruction. Staff recommends denial of the request due to concerns regarding the safety of pedestrians and the flow of vehicular traffic within the subdivision. If this application is denied, the subject lots can only be developed as previously approved. Please note there are additional letters of protest and support for this item since publication.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Brian Walsh, Richmond American Homes, 7770 South Dean Martin Drive, Las Vegas, Nevada.
Good evening, Jeff Parsi, the owner Ridgeback Partners, 97 Roundhill Road to Ron, California.
The Hillside community before you is formerly an Astoria Homes development. There are about 80 residences currently today. The Central Park is approved. What you see before you on the site plan, all of the colored lots are completely finished and vacant. Richmond American Homes has an agreement with the current owner to continue development with our product. What we're requesting here today is eight-foot driveways, and we do believe that there is a hardship because the lots that are colored in blue are on excessively steep streets. When you have an excessively steep street, it results in an excessively steep driveway. If we can go from a six-foot driveway to an eight-foot driveway, that would allow us to have a less steep driveway. In order to go to an eight-foot, 18-foot deep driveway, we wouldn't be able to have the homes we designed. The lots are only 53 feet deep. So an 18-foot deep driveway would prohibit us from developing the product that we want. So we believe that the offsetting, one of the offsetting factors is currently side yards are approved at three feet. We're only requesting five-foot side yards. We think that improves the character of the community. We have made a presentation to the neighbors and the HOA. We do have a letter of support. So if you have any questions, we would like to, for your approval, subject to two conditions that we would like to discuss. Condition two and condition six.
I guess I'd like to add, the only thing that, a couple points. One, this affects a minority of the lots. We're talking about the blue lots on the overhead here. That's approximately 80 out of 291 lots, 27% of the property. Staff's concern is about parking the cars in an eight-foot driveway that it could potentially block pedestrians. We only have sidewalks on half the streets on one side, not both sides. So really, when you think about it, it affects 13% of the project as opposed to 27%. In terms of the support from the community, like Brian said, we had an HOA meeting. The residents fully support the motion. You know, from their letter, they say, quote, "None of our residents raise any concerns about five-to-eight-foot driveways," end quote, from Steve Crystal, president of the HOA. The main concern from the residents is really seeing the community built out. The other point I'd like to make is that the HOA is willing to, for the very small portion of lots that it would affect, the HOA currently enforces a lot of its regulations in the CCNRs, including fining residents for weeds in the yards and so on. And the HOA would be more than willing to, you know, enforce, you know, fines for anybody who parks in an eight-foot driveway blocking the sidewalk. The last point that I'd like to make is that the ramifications of this are actually quite big. We have a contract between the two parties. Our contract and moving forward hinges on Richmond being able to get this approved. We'd like to see the project built out. The residents would like to see the project built out, and it has the potential to bring a lot of jobs and revenue and tax base to Las Vegas.
Okay, this was advertised as public hearing. Anybody wish to speak on the side, please come forward.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. By the looks of that, all of the blue ones is no small percentage, as they put it. I know that these people probably want to get this thing done, but I'll tell you this, they're painting theirself into a corner by not, by fudging on the rules. I've, if you, I remember going around on the Way South edge by that new high school down there, and they've got a project similar like this. And when I drove through it, they had no sidewalks there. The cars were all parked, clear into the street. The kids are all out in the street, and it was a mess. And I can see this turning into the same thing.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on the side, please come forward. Seeing no one, close public hearing. Commissioner Trobridge?
Yes, thank you. If we could get you to point on the map, which sides of the street have the sidewalks?
On this map here, the sidewalk is on this side. There's no sidewalk on this side. There is sidewalk here, but there's no sidewalk here. There is sidewalk here, but there's no sidewalk on here. So it's on one side.
And what is the distance between the curb cuts for the garages on the sides that have the sidewalks?
We would still have a setback of eight feet from the back of sidewalk.
And, yes, I know. So if they're driving a smart car, they could possibly make it. Otherwise, they're going to be hanging into the sidewalk, which will cause them to get a ticket from their own HOA or something. So my question is, between the curb cuts for the two properties, these are narrow lots, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is there distance between the two curb cuts to park a vehicle in the street?
Between the two driveways, can they fit? I think if the lots are 35 feet, 35 feet wide, I think you can park a car between the driveways.
Okay, driveways are probably 14 feet, 15 feet?
Yeah, 16 feet typically.
16, and so if you've got a really short car, you could make it.
Sure. Or in a typical car, yes.
Unless, of course, you have a fire hydrant that's there or a mailbox that's there, which is going to happen quite frequently, I would imagine. What's the width of the streets here?
I believe they're... Yeah. Yeah, 39 feet.
39 feet?
39 feet.
I think Mr. Farlow's observation is way too kind. So what triggered you to go with this? Is it because you're putting a different blueprint on than the previous builder that was there? Is that what's causing this? Because I think your application says something about some five additional model homes?
Well, Richmond American is going to come in with their own product. We're not going to build exactly the same product that Astoria Homes did. All of the approvals that are in place on this SDR are specific to Astoria Homes.
Gotcha.
So when Richmond American comes in with their own models, we have to come back and get the reapprovals. However, on the blocks that are colored in blue, we're asking for a little bit deeper driveway so it's not so steep getting into the garage. That is all we're asking for here today. But we have to come back because we have all of our own product, all of our own models.
It's not to make the houses bigger. It's just so people don't bottom out the cars when they're pulling out of the driveways. It's a steep site, as you can imagine, from a community called Hillside. It's got over 90 feet of vertical drop between the top corner and the bottom corner.
And one of the additional, original things when this came through, there were a lot of three-story homes.
Right. Right.
And because of the slope, there was a lot of compromise given the plan, trying to make this a very attractive kind of Hillside Village, which was what was presented to us. Now, the economy tanks, these are two-story homes.
Right. We only, Richmond American's only plans on building two-story homes.
So they're a bigger base footprint, right?
Right. That's right.
And with that bigger base footprint, that's why we need this drive.
That's right.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not in agreement with your argument that the slope of the drive is going to change that much in the two feet. I think this is strictly more an issue of Richmond builds a different product than Astoria had planned for this.
Right.
And if I was a neighbor, or I was a resident, or somebody who bought into this specialized community plan, I'd feel let down. I mean, it's no one's, I mean, I'm saying, you know, nobody wanted to stop building homes and change things, but it's, I believe this project was kind of intricate the way it was all presented, and a lot of things were agreed to with street widths, sidewalks on one side, and a lot of things that don't just become easier with the concept of a two-story home and a longer driveway. I mean, I, I think where we had looked at this, where driveways were going to be long enough, where cars wouldn't be in the backing into the street or parked into the street, the potential with this plan is we could have cars that are, you look up the street and half the cars could have the back end stick in the street. If, you know, you understand what I'm getting at here?
I see what you're getting at, but on the streets that are very steep, the difference between a six-foot driveway and an eight-foot driveway does make a difference whether that driveway slope is allowed or not allowed under FHA rules. And that's all we're asking for, is simply to allow a driveway that's eight feet deep, only that much more than six feet deep. And it does make enough of a difference in the driveway slope whether it makes FHA rules or not. That's simply all we're asking for. And in the areas where Astoria encountered that, they put a three-story home and an 18-foot driveway. That's how Astoria got around, you know, that problem. We just thought, we're not going to build three-story homes. We don't think it's appropriate in the market today. We're going to do two-story homes, two-car garages, and all we're asking for is on 80 of the lots, we're allowed to go an eight-foot driveway. Everything else will comply with the staff.
And the association's willing to prohibit parking in those eight-foot driveways?
Absolutely. Yes, it is. And enforce it.
That's going to make a lot of people happy.
Sir, may I ask a question?
With the association, you know, chiming down on them every day. Commissioner Quinn?
Yeah, just briefly, the spot that's vacant...
Yeah, just briefly, the, the, the spot that's vacant here, is that supposed to be like a park?
Yeah, there's a park.
Yeah, that's, that's an existing park.
So that's a park. So, the definition of a community would be young families, older families, people with children, people with kids in strollers, unfortunately, people with kids in wheelchairs. How do you expect a mom pushing a stroller to have a half of a sidewalk here and then another half of a sidewalk there to, to get to this park without walking in the street? I mean, this is an absolute impossible design for an average family. Or an, an average family, which I'm in.
This community is already built. The streets are built, the curves are built, the sidewalks are built. I mean, this is a completely built community with the exception of the homes on the lots. I mean, I understand what you're saying, but we have a community that is completely developed other than the homes. Streets, curves, gutters, or, they're getting bond released. So we have a community that is, in essence, finished. We're just trying to get our homes approved, subject to an eight-foot driveway gap.
So, so everything's in place but the houses, is what you're saying?
That's right. And there's, there's already a bunch of houses in place, approximately eighty houses with residents living there already.
Are they all sold?
Yes.
Yeah.
And the other thing I would point out is, when we took this development over, it was from a bank that wasn't taking care of it. The pool was green, it had pool furniture on the bottom of it. It was actually on the local news. We went in there, we cleaned it up. I spent hundreds of thousands of dollars of my own money to fix this up. We did all of the off-site and onsite work required by the city of Las Vegas. We also completed all the water facilities that were remaining to be completed that the previous developer did not finish. So we've been, you know, a model developer in terms of trying to move this project forward to completion.
But you don't build homes. You, you just build finished lots, right?
Correct. We're a, we're a developer and an investor. We, we fix things.
You, you sounded like that was so philanthropic there for a second.
We, we get paid for creating value and improving things.
Absolutely. As you should. I, I just, I believe this is, you know, the example of how a good plan can go very bad, you know, from inception and what was presented to us. I give you credit for finishing, you know, all those improvements. It's just now we're looking at a product that, that, and this, you know, I'm not saying this isn't, you know, an approvable situation with some conditions, but it, it's going to be drastically less for those neighbors within that immediate area. I, I believe. I believe.
We, we spoke to the neighbors. We had a, a community meeting with the residents.
We have a letter from the association?
Yeah, we've had a letter right here.
It's in your backup.
And they're, they're okay? Does it, I don't think it addressed the idea of enforcing, or, or if there's a change, you know, a change to the CCNRs, it has to happen?
They're, they, when we talked about it at the meeting, they were fine with that. Their biggest concern is they live in a half-built community. They want to see it built out. Right now, it's, it's not a gated community, so, you know, other residents from other areas come over and have parties on the lots and stuff. They want this community finished. They want it to be a true neighborhood. So when we presented and we had Council, Councilman Anthony's liaison there at the meeting to witness the meeting, the residents were very excited about Richmond's plans. They couldn't, you know, Brian went through all of Richmond's plans, the elevations, and that's why the residents voted and passed a motion in full support of Richmond's plans.
And, and our two-story homes are virtually no different than the existing two-story homes that are there. The existing two-story homes have six-foot-deep driveways, and our two-story homes are virtually the same in size. We have two-car garages. The only difference between our product and what's there, we don't intend on building a three-story home, which a lot of the neighbors were actually happy about.
Yeah, would preserve some of their views. And the markets changed. You can't build three-story homes. Nobody wants them anymore, and they're, they're a lot more expensive to build than two-story homes.
Mr. Chairman, real quick question. Do most of the units have one or two car garages?
All of my units will have two-car garages.
All of them have two-car garages?
Every one of them.
One last question, through you, Mr. Chair. How many units are we talking here?
The balance of this project, there's two-hundred-and-ninety-one vacant finished lots.
So you need two-hundred-and-ninety-one shorter driveways?
I need about eight, oh, I need eighty driveways that are longer, not shorter. I'm asking for a longer driveway by two feet, about eighty units. The rest of them will conform to the city requirements. I don't need all two-hundred-and-ninety-one to have eight-foot driveways, only about eighty of them, because of the steep streets.
So we're looking at eighty?
About eighty.
Okay, thank you.
And, I mean, I, then we, then we probably can find a solution. When we've had some of these things in the past, builders have put plaques inside the garage saying, you know, reciting the rule that you can't park in these driveways.
Sure.
And if, you know, disclosure to the homers?
We'll happily do a disclosure that the homeowner has to sign. We'll do a covenant running with the land, so if there's a homeowner change.
You understand what I'm trying to get at?
Sure.
I, I just want to be...
People need to be aware that they can't park in short driveways.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may, through you, we have a condition, condition number nine of this staff recommendations, if approved, that the developer shall disclose to potential buyers of all lots, shown on the approved site plan, and once the garage door is less than eighteen feet, that parking in that driveway will impede pedestrian traffic and shall not be allowed. This condition shall be included on the CCNRs and shall be enforced by the homeowners' association. So we've kind of built a condition for this situation into the recommended conditions for approval.
Okay. Okay. And this is the same number of lots that was originally approved, right?
Oh, yeah, it's the same.
Same, same, whatever.
Right. The only request I would have is under condition number two, where it's void, the, if you do move forward and approve our request, that it's void after two years. Being that there's two-hundred-and-ninety-one lots, it's going to take us a lot longer than five years to get through it. In fact, our agreement with the seller spans over five years. So, I mean, if there's some way we could reword that, that condition, that it's not void after two years, we'd be coming back every two years.
Mr. Chairman, the standard condition would be this approval shall be void two years from the date of final approval, unless a building permit is issued for construction.
So once you start pulling permits and start stretching through it?
Okay, I didn't know if it automatically just, no matter what, okay.
I think the other part of it refers to any bonding issues, you know, time-wise, but that's not something that we look at.
Mr. Chairman, just one point of understanding. These eighty homes are going to have the eight-foot driveways, correct?
Right.
And these are the ones that you're going to put notice in the garage that people, you can potentially block the sidewalk in these?
No, you can't.
You can't.
They're agreeing not to, they're agreeing to require no parking in those, of those extended drives, just as if they were six-foot drives.
We're going to agree to have no parking on any driveway, be it...
So that'll be the CCNRs that will indicate no parking?
Right.
So if I bought, if, if you buy one of those homes, every time you pull in the driveway, you have to go all the way in the garage?
That's right. And that, that's every house in the community, including the Astoria homes.
That's what it is, correct.
Okay, so, so you're just applying that to the ones that have the eight-foot driveway as well?
Right. And we'll make that a condition of every home we build, that you can't, you can't park in the driveway, because they're not a standard eighteen-foot gap.
Wow.
And that's true of the Astoria homes, too, because they have shorter driveways.
Well, let me ask you this. Are, are a majority of the residents that are now there complying with, with that?
Yes. It's, it's not an issue. I mean, we, we hear all sorts of complaints. You know, they want to add a hot tub. The parking in the driveways is not an issue. And I actually just drove the community this afternoon and checked it out.
These two-car garages?
Yes.
What, what's, what's the square footage of it?
The homes?
The garage?
It's a standard twenty by twenty, whatever the...
Twenty by twenty by nine, is it?
Yeah, it's whatever the standard interiors. I think it's twenty by twenty.
This is about, okay. Two thousand square feet or somewhere in there. Okay, thank you.
All right. Mr. Trowbridge.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion for denial, and my reasons are that you're going to have eighty homes. These are twelve-hundred-square-foot homes, three, four, three bedrooms. Smaller homes tend to cause people to want to put storage areas in the garage rather than two vehicles. You've got thirty-five-foot-wid, wide lots. Eighteen feet of that thirty-five is consumed by the driveway, which leaves seventeen feet for the parking of a guest vehicle, or maybe the second vehicle that belongs inside the garage, which isn't available because they've got storage stuff inside there. Let's not kid ourselves. We've all lived in smaller homes. That's the optimum. There's going to be areas where you've got the community mailboxes, and there's going to be lots that are going to be impacted by the fire hydrants that have, that are painted red. And so you're going to have extremely restricted parking accessibility. And you're going to wind up with an incredible burden being placed on the homeowners' association to enforce the parking violations that will occur when the people park in their eight-foot driveways. You're also going to have a considerable number of front garage doors that are going to be dented, as people have to gun it, to get up that steep driveway and then slam on the brakes real quick, and they're going to bang into the doors. We've got neighborhoods where I can show you where, if that's the way it is. And you're going to wind up with a neighborhood there that's not going to be reflective of the community that we really want. And so that's why I'm going to make the motion right now in regards to item number thirty-five, Site Development Review thirty-nine, one-seventy-seven, make a motion for denial, along with staff's recommendation. And I doubt of all that was explained at the homeowners' association meeting. Had I been there, I'd explain it that way, and you've seen the audience turn a different direction, I'll bet you.
Motion is for denial. Are there any other comments, questions? Please cast your vote. The yes vote is for the denial. A motion failed? Can we have a motion in the alternative?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to, I'm going to take the better judgment of the developer who's been, been out there. I, I, I too, like Mr. Trowbridge, do have concerns that, that everybody's not, everybody's not going to comply with, comply with this. And, you know, some are going to use their driveways and, and for storage. But I do think this is an opportunity now to take a, an area that's kind of been dilapidated and kind of bring some life back to it. I think it's adequately addressed in the CCNRs. I think you guys are going to require the homeowner, well, you're going to require them so much. I'm, I'm pretty sure if the, the homeowners' association sees somebody in violation, they'll take the appropriate action. I know in the news recently, there's been a lot of discussion about some of these tow companies and the way that they go into some of these associations to just snatch people's cars. And I understand, I think it was clearly state law says that the association has to notify the, the homeowner prior to a tow and all of these things, so I hope that that, that happens. But I'm going to, going to give you the benefit of the doubt, because you're stepping forward to try to complete a neighborhood that, that needs some completing. And after reading the homeowners' association letter, I think, I don't know if the residents are desperate to have it built out, but I think they certainly concur with what you guy, guys have said. So with that, I'll make a motion for approval of item thirty-five, SDR three-nine-one-one-seven, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
With the additional conditions of the, with regards to posting and additional notification to the sellers or buyers?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, Wheeler, can you?
Was that, the Public Works?
Help us with crafting those additional conditions.
If I may check with the city attorney, I mean, those are conditions that will be enforced by the homeowners' association.
They would have to be, I mean, they'd have to put some kind of disclosure notice within their documents that they're signing before they purchase the, the home.
Didn't Public Works have some draft language that you may want to consider?
Yes, if I may, Mr. Chairman, that's, that's what I read in, it's condition number nine in the staff report, it's a, a recommended condition, if approved, that they would have to comply with, including in the CCNRs and making sure your homeowners that buy these lots know they can't park in the driveways.
Got you.
And we agree with that?
Okay. And that would be my, my motion.
And Mr. Chairman, number two hasn't ended?
Yes. And I think for the director's issue, I think these letters, these approvals I'll be recording as a part of this.
My concern, if I may, for the city attorney, if we place this condition, then the city is obliged to place enforcement on the homeowners and...
The Public Works Department has a condition that says the developer shall disclose to potential buyers of all lots, shown on the approved site plan, in which the garage door is less than eighteen feet, the parking in the driveway will impede pedestrian traffic and shall be allowed, shall not be allowed. This condition shall be included in the CCNRs and shall be enforced by the homeowners' association. I mean, normally when we place conditions, those are ones we normally enforce. I, I'm not sure how we do that.
If I may, if we could just leave it without the last sentence, I think, and then we're not in the position of...
So, so that means then the city can enforce this?
What, what, what sentence are you thinking about leaving?
Well, I'm thinking that we would have the requirement that they post it. So the only thing that the city would enforce was that it was posted. The enforcement of the action of the parking is separate, the CCNRs, and that's not the city that's enforcing that.
I guess my concern, but where would it be posted? Would it, in the sales office or on the lots themselves, or?
In the past, there's been a plaque in the garage if there was one of these. I mean, I, we've approved...
Well, how can we do that? Okay, that's fine.
But, but once, once the sale's done, then the city's not in the enforcement of it, I understand.
I mean, ultimately, the homeowners' association is going to be responsible for enforcing all of these rules. So ultimately, it will fall to them to make sure that their residents are parking within the garages and not in the driveway.
So that would be that the developer shall post notice within each garage of all lots, shown on the approved site plan, in which garage door is less than eighteen feet, the parking in the driveway shall not be allowed.
And that can be a Public Works condition?
Doesn't matter where it is, it's just a city condition.
Do you have consent agreement, right?
Yes, we are.
So that would be my motion with all the amendments that were just read into the record.
And motion is for approval. Please cast your vote. And that is approved, and that is final action in the absence of appeal.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Now we go to item thirty-six, Director's Business, African Owner City, Las Vegas. Update of long-range planning items. There's no recommendation.
Good evening, Chairman and Commission. My name is Courtney Mooney. I'm the Urban Design Coordinator and Historic Preservation Officer for the City of Las Vegas Planning and Development Department. And in an effort to keep you informed about all of the projects that are happening within the Planning and Development Department, I'm going to give you a walkthrough of the historic preservation projects. I will, next slide, please. First, I'd like to talk to you about the National Register plaques. Recently, we received funding from the Las Vegas Centennial Commission and Historic Preservation Commission to purchase plaques for every single property within the city of Las Vegas that's listed on the National Register. So this is in, they're bronze plaques. It's an excellent way to recognize these properties. We will be doing a brochure so that people can use the brochure on a walking tour and tour all of these sites. Fortunately, we have sites that are distributed throughout the city, so this will bring people throughout the city to these various sites. As you can see, we have twelve of them that are installed here, and we are, there are four sites that are pending development. Next slide, please. The Historic West Side School Master Plan, Restoration and Master Plan Project is moving forward. This is a coordination between the Planning and Development, Neighborhood Services, Public Works, and Councilman Barlow's office. It will include the site development of the West Side School, which will include landscaping, parking lot, improved ADA access, and site access improvements. As you probably know, the site itself is difficult to get to. You have to kind of go around the block to get to it, so we'll be addressing pedestrian and vehicular access to the site. Next slide, please. The restoration and ADA upgrade of the nineteen-twenty-three and nineteen-forty-eight West Side School buildings is also part of this. We are going to be working... School buildings is also part of this. We are going to be working with the community to develop a programming vision for the buildings, and that's going to come throughout the master plan process. Some of the ideas that we have got from the community already are historic exhibits, sites for art, a type of art gallery, you know, meeting space, maybe perhaps a library, or a place to just sit and read a book. So...and also a nonprofit incubator. So we're still looking at a lot of these different ideas to see kind of what the market will support and what the community wants. We have received five-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars from the Las Vegas Commission for the Centennial to do the master plan portion. We do not have any funds in place for the construction. We were intending to apply for funds from the Nevada Commission for Cultural Affairs. And as many of you may know, that's been in the news lately. Those bonds may not be sold. So that funding is sort of unsure at this point, but we will be actively pursuing other funding sources. Just to give you an update on the Historic Fifth Street School, this has been an incredible success. It opened in two thousand and eight. The current tenants are the UNLV Downtown Design Studio, American Institute of Architects, the Nevada School of the Arts, and City of Las Vegas offices. And they run the gamut for programming, which is weddings, lectures, seminars, festivals, events, conferences, galleries. It's...anything goes. It's really incredible, and it's always being programmed. So that's a good turnout. Floyd Lam Park at Tulie Springs. We just recently finished the restoration of the Foreman's House. That was completed in December of two thousand and nine. It is open for tours from...by appointment only and also during the Las Vegas Farmer's Market. The annual Cowboy Christmas event in December also hosts tours, and the Spring Celebration in April. And the tours are being provided by members of the community who are very active with that park. They continue to be very active. The next project that we're working on now is the Equestrian Area, and this will include improvements to the buildings, corral, and feed trough, including removal of nonhistoric materials and repairing and replacing historic materials. And that's expected to be completed by February two thousand and eleven. And like the visitor's center, that work is being completed by staff from the Field Operations Department. The Berkeley Square Historic District, this district is located at the terminus of F Street and Owens. It was built in nineteen fifty-four. It's been designated on the National Register of Historic Places in October of two thousand and nine. We've received twenty-five thousand dollars from the Las Vegas Centennial Commission to put banners around the perimeter of the neighborhood that focus on the history of the neighborhood. And right now, we're kind of evaluating the options for how those banners will be installed, whether they go on existing light poles or we purchase different poles. And again, we'll be working with the community to decide how those banners will look and what the information will be. And we are...we receive about thirty to forty thousand dollars a year from the State Historic Preservation Office to do Historic Resource Survey. This year's grant will be on the Beverly Green Neighborhood, which is located...it's going to be divided into phases, but it's between St. Louis, Las Vegas Boulevard, Sahara, and Sixth. And we also...the Historic Preservation Commission has partnered with the Las Vegas Convention Visitors Authority on the Heritage Travel website, which is excellent. It shows...it's linked through our website and also the LBCVA, and visitors can look at all of our historic sites. It also has information on transportation from the airport and interactive maps. So it's very good to support the heritage tourism. And that's it. Thank you. Any questions?
Very good. It's great to see all the wonderful programs going and all the effort to preservation. Now, on Beverly Green, just a personal...what does that all include? Again, the boundaries?
St. Louis, Las Vegas Boulevard, Sah...I'm sorry, Sahara and Sixth.
Okay.
Yes. And those homes are ranch-style homes, mid-century ranch.
Is that the commercial buildings on Las Vegas Boulevard?
Those are included in the Historic Resource Survey. Right. But because we go by the Neighborhood Association boundaries.
Okay. Great. Any other comments?
I just have one quick question. I had a phone call recently from a lady who takes children in carts to the Tulie Springs, not Tulie Springs, the one that you're redoing. What's it called?
Floyd Lam.
Yeah, Floyd Lam. And she's having a problem getting the carts in because the kids are immobile and they're not in wheelchairs. She's just kind of pulling them through. So I was wondering if you're...could you check into that, make sure that the trails are accessible for people that want to go in there that are either wheelchair-bound or in a wagon?
Absolutely.
She pulls them through in a wagon, actually.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, we will.
Thank you. If there are other comments, I really appreciate the update.
Thank you.
Our next item is DIR three-nine-two-nine-one, African Owner City Las Vegas, presentation of Proposed Unified Development Code, UDC Chapters Related to General Provisions, Permitted Uses, Nonconforming Uses, and Structures, and Definitions, and Measures.
Thank you. On Monday, September twentieth, staff presented an overview to the Planning Commission and City Council at the Joint Planning Commission-City Council meeting, which discussed the revisions to the Title nineteen zoning code, which would include merging the Title eighteen and the Title nineteen zoning code. These first four chapters that we are bringing to you today are...do not have any real substantive changes to them. They are...these are the chapters that really only have formatting changes to them. So I will walk you through briefly what the chapters are. Nineteen hundred, General Provisions. We'll start with that one. With the merging of the Title eighteen and the Title nineteen elements, we condensed some of the stated purpose, reference title, administration, interpretation, enforcement, and fee schedule language that was, you know, could have been duplicated between the different titles, and there might have been some inconsistency. So we took the opportunity to clean those up and merge those during...as we merged Title eighteen and Title nineteen. And we also relocated the official zoning map sections. And the graphics are consistent throughout the slides. The graphic on the left of the slide shows you what the existing code looks like and how we've reformatted it to the two-column format with more bold headings. Nineteen twelve is the permissible uses. This was something that we talked about also during the Planning Commission-City Council Joint Workshop. The reorganized permitted use table, we've reorganized it by eliminating the categorical listing. We've alphabetized the uses. We've also separated the use district matrix from the description requirements text associated with each use. And we've relocated the off-premise sign section to this chapter. So this is a pretty significant change for this particular section because it really makes it so much easier. And if you recall from the meeting on Monday, this is where a lot of the hyperlinks are associated with the pages...page numbers on the right that will take you directly to those requirements. So this will make this particular table, especially online, a lot easier to use. The section, Chapter nineteen point fourteen, the nonconforming uses and structures, again, there are no substantive changes from the currently adopted nonconformity provisions, simply formatting changes. And the nineteen eighteen definitions and measures, we merged the Title eighteen and nineteen elements related to how terms and phrases are defined. We addressed a number of inconsistent definitions and added many illustrations to provide greater clarity. And we added a subchapter to address how measurements and calculations are intended to be done. And here is our tentative timeline for review. In October, you will be reviewing the Planning Commission...excuse me, the chapters nineteen point oh-six, nineteen point ten, nineteen sixteen, and in November, nineteen oh-two, nineteen oh-four, nineteen oh-eight. Also during October, we will have three open house meetings. And if all of this goes according to schedule, it will go to City Council in January.
Through you, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I know at that meeting, there was a concern. I know Councilman Barlow brought up about open space. Is...can you tell me where that's going to be addressed? And I think it was in relations to...
Right.
Amenity zones and...
That will be addressed in November.
Okay.
Right.
At the November...
Right, at the November.
...schedule?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I think Commissioner Trowbridge, if you had a comment?
No, I was just going to make a nice comment. This is a tremendous job on an incredibly difficult project of taking some diverse documents and written at different times with different languages and different definitions and getting them all in the same book. I think it's a remarkable accomplishment. Congratulations to everybody involved in the project.
Thank you. I'll pass it on to the team.
One of the things I think is most important for people to understand, and Courtney understands this, is this isn't just staff doing this over the last year. This has been many work groups, stakeholders from the home builders, Southern Valley Home Builders, representatives in NAUP, representatives from the architectural community, representatives in engineering, community developers. And all of these people have put in a lot hours. And this is an ongoing process, but it's really the city's way of, we have changed and we have looked forward to make development greatly simplified. It's not perfect. It's an ongoing process. But people need to understand that the city has taken a mammoth ship in the way these documents are working and changed direction of that ship for the customer, the consumer, the average person that comes down to these meetings, so they know what's going on in their community. And I think that message doesn't always get out of how much has been done to break down the barriers, perceived barriers in the development community. And I've gotten nothing but great feedback from various people involved and the organizations. Nothing's perfect. You know, dislike everything will evolve. And as we go through the rest of the chapters, I think people will be surprised just how open and how changed the development process and the planning process in the City of Las Vegas has been.
Thank you, Chairman. That's certainly our intent.
Thank you. Now we will go on to item thirty-eight, DIR three-nine-four-nine-five, Election and Planning Commission Vice Chairman for the remainder of two thousand and ten. This is to replace the unexpired term as vice chairman of Commissioner Ellsworth that left us recently. And we'll open up the nominations at this time.
I would, with great pleasure and confidence, I would like to nominate Steve Evans for the position of vice chairman of our group.
Any other nominations or comments? Commissioner Boyne?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment on that. I think Commissioner Evans is worthy of that. Just in December, we'll dress him as Santa Claus and put a beard on him and see how that goes.
Any other nominations?
Make a motion to re-close nominations.
This motion is to elect Commissioner Evans as vice chairman for the remainder of the term. Please cast your vote. Now we have one more item, which is item thirty-nine, TXT three-nine-two-one-seven, African Owner City Las Vegas, Discussion and Possible Action to amend Title Two of the Title nineteen point oh-four and Title nineteen point two-oh to establish regulations, applicable zoning districts, and definitions for auto sales showroom use.
Mr. Chair and members of the commission, the text amendment that you have before you this evening is to establish a new use entitled nineteen oh-four, entitled Auto Sales Showroom, which would allow for the display and sales of new and used motor vehicles only within a completely enclosed building. Please note that the text amendment would not allow outdoor storage of vehicles, would not allow repair of vehicles, and would not allow rental of vehicles. The use as proposed would be permitted as a right in the C-two district, the CN district, and the M district, and by special use permit in the C-one and CPB districts. This use was added to the list of permitted uses in the Arts District in two thousand and seven. And again, we would be adding this to Title nineteen oh-four to allow in the districts that I've just described to you. Please note in the staff report that staff is recommending approval of this text amendment. Thank you.
Okay. Comments, questions? Questions? I guess I'll start. At least I have some. As a person who deals with shopping centers, and we have a preponderance of closed big-box buildings throughout this community, this is a terrible thing to head down the road on. All the things you mentioned about no outside storage, the potential for trucks, delivery trucks, to bring cars coming and going, and it's, oh, I'm only going to do it for a day, and they block the driveways in these retail centers. We can't cure the economy by making more auto storage buildings out of C-two retail centers. And I just think...I understand, you know, the desire to try and deal with these uses, but we have problems with almost every car dealer that comes before us for not conforming to one item or the other within the code. No matter what we do, they've got balloons, they've got this. And that's the business, and that's great. But that, to me, is not compatible with a shopping center like a Boca Park in Summerlin or a Town Square or a Town Center building for North Durango that suddenly, in this downtown urban, you know, these little villages that we're trying to make walkable, we're going to change our code to make them auto dealerships. And it's just, you know, my view of this. And I think it's a potential greater mistake than we're seeing here today. I mean, I wouldn't want to see an auto dealership in the middle of the Great Wash Project that we just approved tonight just because they have half a wing, you know, we can start selling, no matter what the cars are, whether they're, you know, high-end cars or low-end cars, we'll have something stuck out front with a for-sale sign in the middle of these projects, and it'll be an enforcement nightmare. But...any other comments? We need to make a recommendation to City Council, so we need a motion. This is a voting matter, so we need a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve.
There's a motion for approval. Please cast your vote. That motion ties, and that will go on to City Council with no recommendation. And now we go to citizens' participation. That portion of the meeting is, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of planning. No subject may be acted upon by the planning commission unless the subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name and record.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, two forty North nineteenth Street. First of all, the bitch and moan department would like to welcome their new commissioner here.
Am I supposed to thank him?
We are going to have a problem here. And let me tell you, if you read the issue of Las Vegas Weekly that just came out, it's talking about local-grown fruits and vegetables. I volunteered at that orchard out there. This is the university's cooperative extension. It doesn't work where we are in downtown Las Vegas. In my precinct, the last two stone fruit trees just died by neighbors. You cannot keep those trees alive down here. What they're talking about, they're talking about up in the far north end of the valley. But down here, Es... But down here, as Commissioner Evans pointed out, our temperature, our average nightly temperature has risen 10 degrees over, what, 35 years, I think, 40 years? Those trees cannot stay alive at that point. And the problem is, as you well know, that we have these heat islands down here that are killing these trees. And I don't know how to deal with that. Commissioner Evans, you were... I'll bring out one other thing that you keep bringing out and... And you're absolutely right, is this desert land statement. The people come out, throw this rock on the ground, put a cactus on there and an old dried-out buffalo head or something, and call it dead. No, it's true, you brought it out, and it's absolutely true. You drive by my precinct, and that's what they're all doing. And when you add in all that asphalt and the cement of the freeways and everything, it just... That heat just never quits, and you cannot keep a tree alive down here. Now, we're part of the Tree City USA. We have... It's part of the Arbor Foundation. I'm gonna try Honey Lotus now and try that, but if you drive... Drive by my place and look at that. That disaster that you see out there is $117,022 and 22 years of hard work. It's $117,022 and 22 years of hard work, and not a thing is alive down there except the grapevines. And we've got to... We've got to start making plans on how to reduce this terrible... This continual, never-ending temperature. It never froze one day in my... On my property last year, but it's something we have to keep aware of. Thank you, and you're welcome, Mr. Evans.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments? Then we'll adjourn the meeting.